Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Town of Fishkill Planning Board on Thursday, June 9, 2022. I am Anthony Brozier, Vice Chair of the Town of Fishkill Planning Board. Chairman John Cantor will be joining us later in the agenda after the public hearing as he has recused himself from that agenda item. I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get going on tonight's agenda, I do have a few announcements. I've already mentioned the first one. John Cantor will be joining us after the public hearing. Felix Lopez has informed the board that he was running a few minutes late, so he should be joining us momentarily. Number two, reminder, please silence your cellphone or other electronic device while in the meeting room as a courtesy to others in attendance. Number three, please speak into the microphone so that all audience in the room and at home can hear what we're saying. And regarding agenda items for tonight, there are two announcements. First one is for fish kill self-storage. We have received a letter from Cuddy Invader earlier today, June 9, 2022, that I've been advised by council to read into the record. Dear Chairperson Cantor and members of the planning board, we are writing on behalf of 1292 Realty LLC, the applicant, in connection with the above-captioned matter. Due to complications arising out of the COVID-19 pandemic, the applicant respectfully requests that the planning board adjourn the above-captioned matter that is currently scheduled for continued review at this board's June 9, 2022, meeting agenda, and that the matter be placed on the planning board's July 14, 2022, meeting agenda for further discussion. We ask that the board not discuss the application during the June 9 meeting agenda. We look forward to continuing our review of the project with you at the planning board's July 14, 2022, meeting agenda. In the meantime, should the town staff or planning board have any questions or comments with regard to the foregoing, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your attention to this matter, very truly yours, Taylor M. Palmer. The other item on tonight's agenda, Van Wick Muse. I have received a letter from Zarin and Steinmetz earlier today, June 9, 2022, that I've been advised by council to read into the record. Dear Chairman Cantor and members of the planning board, this firm represents Toll Van Wick LLC. Toll, the owner of the unfinished portion of the Van Wick Muse subdivision, aka Merritt Park condominiums. We were informed yesterday that due to various scheduling complications, your board's traffic consultant has been unable to review the traffic comparison letter Toll submitted on May 25. We understand that obtaining the traffic consultant's input on the letter is necessary before your board will consider the draft negative declaration that has been prepared. Accordingly, we respectfully request this matter be adjourned tonight to the July meeting so that review of the traffic comparison letter can occur. We also anticipate submitting the materials requested in CPL's memorandum dated June 8, 2022, ahead of the July meeting with the intent of completing the record so the board may act on the seeker documents in July. We appreciate that the town's consultant informed us ahead of the meeting tonight about the status of the traffic review and look forward to meeting with you again next month. Respectfully submitted, Zarin and Steinmetz, signed by David J. Cooper and Brian T. Sensiball. So tonight's first agenda item, we don't have any minutes to approve tonight. So first agenda is the public hearing. Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Applicant seeks site development plan approval for the construction of a 47,073-square-foot two-story office building, a 15,187-square-foot one-story accessory maintenance building, the reconstruction of an existing 14,527-square-foot warehouse for accessory storage and exercise use, and the addition of an accessory park and meditation areas along with all associated improvements, including 247 parking spaces, which we'll discuss, and four loading spaces. The proposed project is for use by members of the religious order and religious volunteers. The parcels for this proposal are located in the PI Planned Industry Zoning District with one lot consisting of 52.2 acres at 5 Chelsea Industrial Park and the other consisting of 5.14 acres at 26 Chelsea Industrial Park. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was opened by the board at the April 14 meeting and continued at the May 12 meeting, the planning board meeting. At this point, I would like to appoint our alternate planning board member, Vijay Sulpah, as a voting member on this agenda item, both during the public hearing portion and the project review portion later tonight. At this point, I will ask the applicant if they have anything they would like to mention or present to the public prior to the continuation of receiving public comments.
Good evening, Mr. Brozier and members of the board. Good to be back with you. Sorry I missed the last meeting. But since the last meeting, I wanted to comment on a couple of things since this public hearing was held open primarily for the benefit of the traffic study and allow the public to comment on that. We wanted to emphasize we were able to submit the traffic study and that the traffic study concluded that our proposed project is not expected to cause any significant impact to the traffic circulation. So in other words, the project's not going to change the current traffic flow. And that was without taking into account that the primary users will be coming from the Rivercrest. It was assumed in the study that it was as if people were coming from all over. We asked for that, take that very conservative approach to the traffic study. Also considered in the traffic study were four days of the year, which we consider might be an unusual traffic situation, and it's not a continuous thing. But those four days, the first is we have an annual block party. We call it a family day, but it's called a block, but it's similar to a block party. And for that, we do ask the residents of Rivercrest to move their vehicles to the Chelsea property so that we can use the driveways, the streets for that fair party that we have for our occupants. And we do get permits from the town to hold that each year. We haven't had it the past two years, but we did just have it April 27 this year. And then three times a year, Rivercrest residents, sorry, these masks, I gotta get used to these. Three times a year, Rivercrest residents are allowed to invite family and close personal friends to a live-streamed special worship program. And so in that case, because there are people coming, we often ask our occupants to move their vehicles to the Chelsea property so that those who are, their family and friends can park closer. So we just wanted to make sure that was clear, that that was included in the study, and even with that, no significant impacts. We also submitted our documented responses to the comments received so far as of the submission deadline and points that were committed to a meeting and agreeing to, to help mitigate, address some of the concerns that our neighbors have. And then finally, I'd like to clarify just a few facts about our project. The proposed project is for members of the Religious Order of Jehovah's Witnesses, not Jehovah's Witnesses in total. It's a select group that volunteer their time and their energies for the benefit of the religious activities of Jehovah's Witnesses. So we just want to make sure that everyone understands this is not like our kingdom halls in our places of worship where the public are invited to come. This is a specific for the members of the order. Not even all of Jehovah's Witnesses are allowed free access in and out of here. And that will be controlled by access-controlled security gates that are part of the project. And that also applies to the recreation areas. Again, it's an amenity primarily for the occupants of Rivercrest. It is not for Jehovah's Witnesses in general. We will not be bussing in spectators. We will not be bussing in teams. There are not tournaments. There are not leagues. That's not what we do, and that's not the purpose of this. That lack of public access does not apply to the easement for the Greenway Trail. Obviously, that's being provided easement so that when that trail is constructed, as with all aspects, other parts of the trail, it's open to the public to use. No printing operations or video production studios will be, are on this site. Printing is done at another facility. We had looked at using this for audio/video production, but that's been moved to a project now that we're trying to get approved in Aramapo. And then finally, in an effort to make sure that community was fully aware of the project, we prepared this two-page newsletter, which we sent out to 675 households in Holly Ridge, Overlook Point, Streamside Knowles, Vista Point, excuse me, and then also the residents to our immediate north along, get the roads right, Briarwood Drive and Woodcrest Court. And so besides renderings of the project, we included information of where they could find information about the project on the town's planning board website. And we also provided the name and phone number of a local Rivercrest resident that they could call any time to have their questions answered. The idea being, we want to hear from our neighbors. And then, of course, we have also reached out to the Holly Ridge HOA to try to set up a meeting with them. So we just wanted to highlight those things and the fact that the letter we submitted, May 25, we are committed to the changes that we highlighted in that letter. Thank you.
Thank you. And later on, there is the project review portion, so you will be back up and we will go through your letter in detail and also the traffic study as well.
Exactly.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get started, I am going to read the rules of conduct for public hearings. I did see the flyer there at the front on the way in as well, but I'll read through them anyway. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone. Speakers are limited to no more than four minutes. There will be a warning when there is one minute left, and I will kindly ask our council to keep time, please. Speakers should provide only new or different information or commentary. Repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings are prohibited. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing so that they can summarize their comments during the hearing. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the board, i.e. the particular application under review at the hearing. Verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts, as well as slanderous or obscene language, or making signs with the body or face are prohibited. No speaker shall make any personal attacks on anyone. If a person continues to interrupt the chair, after the chair has asked them to stop, they will be asked to leave and escorted from the meeting room if necessary. I'm going to pause right there. I'm going to ask Dominic, just to, regarding those rules, regarding the kinds of comments we're looking to receive tonight, you know, so that we don't have repetitive comments. I was wondering if you can speak to items that would be in our board's purview?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Anthony. As was mentioned earlier, like the public hearing was held open for this month for the applicant to provide additional information regarding traffic. Traffic study's been submitted. It was part of their package that was submitted to the board on May 25 and has been available for public review. Any additional comments at this point should really be narrowly focused, if possible, because we're going into our third month of public hearings on this particular project. And so as a result, you know, like repetitive comments or comments that were made, you know, at prior meetings, I think that the board is well aware of what the concerns of the public are. And so I think at this point, it would be helpful if there's any new information to be brought forward or any additional comments on any recent submissions would be helpful. But overall, like the most helpful comments to the board are comments that are really directed at the proposed site plan, the uses, and the potential impacts of those uses on surrounding neighborhoods, rather than just general comments or, you know, other things of other natures that are really beyond this board's purview.
Thank you. Before I open for public comment of those in the room, we did receive several comments via email since the previous planning board meeting. I will not read each of the emails verbatim, but I can assure the public that all emails are part of the project record and have been received by the board, our consultants, and the applicant. The key items pertaining to the purview of this planning board will be discussed with the applicant in detail during the project review. We received an email from Kelly Antonucci dated June 7. The commenter brought up several items, some of which I will ask our attorney to speak to. Concerns about the newsletter that was mailed to the residents. The letter described misrepresentations in the mailer and asked that the planning board require the applicant to send out accurate information. I just want to clarify that is not within the abilities of this board.
Yeah, all that was required was the public hearing notice, be adequately published and posted. And, you know, anything that the applicant wants to disseminate to the public to, in their opinion, provide information is up to the applicant. I mean, the board has that information, but the board also has all of the site plan information as well in front of it. And ultimately, you know, this public hearing is for people to make their comments on the site plan.
Other items in that email also included concerns about proposed plantings on the Town of Fishkill property. We also received an email from Kenya Gadsden dated June 7. The commenter brought up several items, at least one of which I'm going to ask our consultant to speak to. A request to read all emails in totality. I did speak with you about this, and the planning board is not required to read emails verbatim. It is part of the project record. Our members all have those, as well as the consultants and the applicant, so...
And they are clearly made part of the record as noted by Debbie when she distributes them.
But my role would be to indicate that we have, in fact, received.
Correct.
There was also a request to play a video at the public hearing, and Dominic, I want you to speak about that as well, about whether that is, you know...
I mean, the public hearing really is for the public to provide their comments to the board on the site plan. And as far as a video or if there's some kind of additional information that a member of the public would like to draw the board's attention to, they're able to provide a link to that. That's up to the board as to whether or not you would like to review something that's more general in connection with the applicant. But anything that's specific to the actual proposal should be part of a public comment that's made here tonight. And we're really not set up to be looking at videos about general concerns.
Thank you. There was also a question about who owns Industrial Way, concerns about the applicant reaching out to the HOA, and FOIL requests to the town. We also received a copy of the letter previously read by Louise Daniele at the May planning board meeting. We received an email from Hanyu Lee on May 27 in opposition to the project. The email did not make mention of any items that would be in the purview of this planning board. We received an email from Ann Cantor on May 26 questioning the sewer structure for the project. We received an email from Marissa Bennett, HOA Board President at Holly Ridge, dated May 12, received by the planning board on May 13. The items of concern brought up traffic, noise, lighting, disruption to nature and wildlife, access to the riverfront. The commenter requested downlighting timers and noise ordinance times. And finally, we received an email from Yulay on May 13. The commenter brought up traffic and safety as primary concerns. At this time, I will ask the public by a show of hands who would wish to speak. I'll start from the front.
Good evening. Teresa Kraft, Beacon. I just want to start by saying I take offense to starting this public hearing with a speech to intimidate residents from speaking in fear they may be repetitive to previous public hearing comments that they didn't submit, but somebody else might have said it. This is an infringement on our freedom of speech. Due to the proliferation of overdevelopment in Southern Dutchess along the Town of Fishkill and the city of Beacon borders, especially in the areas of 9D, it is imperative that this planning board scale back this extensive overbuild-out plan project. Unfortunately, many large swatches of undeveloped green spaces in the Town of Fishkill have been earmarked for these types of development. This proposed submission of what you said, 47,000-square-foot two-story office building and a 15,000-plus-square-foot maintenance building will forever change our historic view sheds from the Hudson River and the future rail trail, the Greenway Trail, being proposed along the river. We will see it stick out like a sore thumb. Besides planning for parking for over 240 cars, being a large heat island, will these accommodate zero-emission cars that will eventually need 240 recharging stations? That daily disruption this traffic will generate on its surrounding neighbors and Hudson Valley residents who travel that corridor daily will experience a detrimental impact on the quality of life, including my own. The Town of Fishkill should not rush and compromise the integrity of our natural environment. The goal should not be to get cookie-cutter projects built, but to have a quality of life and green environment throughout this municipality that will make the existing residents and visitors experience stronger and healthier lives. Throw in the mix of that application that was removed tonight or adjourned to the next meeting. For a massive storage facility in the same section of town, we will see a huge increase on Route 9D traffic, as well as air, noise, and light pollution. I urge you not to approve the site development of this project. What they say will be used today may change tomorrow, and they may open the floodgates to their entire community. Thank you.
Show of hands for comments?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Steven Spatafino. I've been a resident of the peaceful community of Holly Ridge for 10 years. I live on High Ridge Court, which has not been so quiet over the last few years. There's been excessive noise due to the makeshift ball field and Rivercrest residents have been using, clanking of bats and cheering. Ironically, this noise completely stopped once these town planning board meetings began. The Jehovah's claim to want to be good neighbors, but their actions have been deceptive. The proposed ball field, soccer field, stands, and 250-some-odd parking spaces, which have no business being in a residential area, will create an unbearable amount of noise for the surrounding community, especially where I live in the cul-de-sac that butts right up against their property. One former owner in our community promptly and coincidentally sold his unit, which is across the street from my townhome, on January 31. That person is a recently-elected Fishkill Town Board Member. His actions speak volumes about how bad and irresponsible these proposals are for the surrounding community. I can't tell you how many of our neighbors are already considering moving. This is so bad. If by chance this project is inevitable, which I can't imagine why it would be, we request an extensive long-term noise study regarding a sound barrier wall like we have on parkways that would be installed on the riverfront property and maintained by the Watchtower Organization. If the major noise problem cannot be resolved, it would be unlawful for the planning board to approve a project that has no means of mitigating this issue. A disturbance such as this is an illegal taking of my rights to enjoy my property. Trees will not do the job here. Judging by the excessive noise that was happening with a few players on a small makeshift baseball field before they were on their short-term best behavior, add a soccer field, baseball field, stands, and 250 parking spaces for guests, and it will be a massive disturbance for the surrounding community. Many of us have been here since the inception of this community. Once this project is completed, the negative impact it will have will be irreversible. We deserve the right to live peacefully and quietly. Thank you.
Show of hands. Who else wishes to speak? Yes, behind, yes.
Hello, I'm Marissa Bennett. I'm the Board President at the HOA for Holly Ridge. So we haven't received any requests to speak or meet at all. So I'm willing to do that. I've already submitted my comments a couple of times, and I'm not going to repeat, you know, what my thoughts are on this. But I will say, if you're looking to do what you're saying, I think that those items need to be included in the contract that gets signed, and there needs to be a way to hold them accountable. So if you're not going to open it up to the full Jehovah Witness community, we have to have a way to hold them accountable to that. Because like the, you know, other person mentioned, that could change tomorrow, you know? And we're very committed to the environment that we live in, and we want the safety of our children that are riding bikes on a street that's already impacted by all the cars. And, you know, we're just very concerned about the safety. So again, I'm not going to continue to go through the comments that have already been shared, but, you know, we're willing to meet. I mean, I've shared the comments. I don't think that they're being very neighborly. There's quite a few developments around the area that we haven't seen any reach out. And, you know, I think some of our other community members are going to come up here and share some feedback, but I just wanted to say that.
Yes.
My name is Raissa Bruce. I live in Holly Ridge only a couple of years. I love this community. It's beautiful. And I absolutely agree with people who were speaking before me. Please pay attention. This is very, very important to us. Thank you.
Show of hands. Anybody else? Yes, behind the laptop that I can't, I see a hand though.
Good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Colburn. I live on Granite Court. I've been a resident for three years here. I've lived peacefully with the Jehovah's Witnesses from the day one. So I know that there's probably not a lot that can be done because this project falls within the scope of what they're looking to do. I guess my big issue is, to back up what Mr. Spatafino said, we're going to need a sound barrier for whatever they're going to do. Trees don't work. I'll tell you why. I know for a fact. Go on up to Malta, New York, at Saratoga County Speedway, sit at this guy's little McMansion that he's got that's next to it. Of course, he's the one who built it. And there's tons of trees. You cannot see that Speedway, but you can sure hear it every summer. Now, what does work is what's on the thruway. We're going to need those kind of type of barriers for this project because it could easily expand. Everybody's meaning well at this moment. I believe everybody's being truthful at this moment. But people change, circumstances change, and things change. So my big thing with this whole project, okay, besides traffic, which 9D, everybody knows is awful, is noise. And when is that noise going to happen? When's it going to start? And when is it going to end? You know? Live next to a, live next to a bar, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. You know, you're counting the clock when it's closing time. So I don't know the rules that you have in this town for quiet hours, but I'd just like to leave you with that little bit of what I know about noise. I want to thank you for your time.
Yes, in front of the gentleman who just spoke.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kelly Antonucci, 17-year resident of Holly Ridge. At the last meeting, the Watchtower rep said that they would like to plant trees as a sound barrier, and they would need to do that on town property and Holly Ridge HOA property because otherwise the trees would be planted on or by the cap. The cap is what covers the toxic waste site and is designed to keep all of us safe. But if they planted, were not able to plant the trees on our property or, and/or the town's property, they'd have to plant them by the cap, and the roots would deteriorate the cap. And that is a statement from the Jehovah Witness attorney that was on video. So obviously, that's extremely concerning to all of us here at Holly Ridge and the surrounding communities. Mr. Brozier had told the rep that he would need to contact the HOA directly as well as the town board. And as of today, we have not been contacted by the Jehovah Witness, and neither has the town, from my understanding. So obviously, this is a huge concern of ours. We are concerned for our safety at this point if they're planting trees that are going to deteriorate the cap. They don't seem to take your suggestion very seriously, although I think this is extremely serious... serious situation. The Jehovah Witness rep also dismissed the planning board's suggestion of a sound barrier wall, stating that he did not think that we would like to see a wall. He is not authorized to speak for us, and he never asked us. We actually would like a wall. As some of my neighbors have mentioned, we'd also like an acoustic consultant to do an acoustic study on the impact of the noise from these fields. So, instead of reaching out to us, they sent us this misrepresentation newsletter, but apparently that is acceptable to send out lies. And they, let's see here. So, I don't think that they took your wise suggestions to contact the HOA or the town. Obviously, we're concerned about toxic chemicals killing us or making us sick, and where these trees are going to be planted. As this is a safety risk, I would like to ask for a full environmental study of this plan, where they are planting the trees, and what the options are for protecting the cap. And I would, again, ask that this meeting be held open, and that the Board require the HOA to complete these items. I also want to respond to some of their items in their response dated May twenty-sixth. It refers to industrial zoning, that this property is zoned for that. They show an aerial photo of the area in April nineteen ninety-four on packet page thirty-four, with our current roads superimposed on this forest land. And I have to admit they're superimposed, because Holly Ridge, Streamside, Overlook Point, and most of Castle Point did not even exist in nineteen ninety-four. And they say that it has always been zoned industrial, but really, the greatest point that this development does not belong there is the photos that they included in the packet. So, I would urge you to look at those photos from nineteen ninety-four and compare it to the photo of July twenty-twenty-one on page forty-five. Communities have developed around this industrial site. It's not appropriate to place this development here now. This is a family neighborhood. I would also like to address some issues with the traffic study, and I would like to understand, is it acceptable to begin a traffic study that has not been approved by the planning board? Because last month's meeting, we found that they had already started the traffic study. On packet page fourteen forty-five shows a summary of accidents at the Brockway, ninety, and Pappas Lane intersection. It states that the time period for this was February first, twenty sixteen, to February twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. At the bottom of the page, it summarizes the accidents by years with columns for twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
You have one minute.
Okay, I found this peculiar, because the study ends in eighteen, so why would there be a column for twenty nineteen displaying zero accidents? That should have, the very least, have stated NA for not applicable, because otherwise it's misrepresenting the number of accidents and implying that there were no accidents in twenty nineteen, when we don't really know that. You know, I really want to verify this information, but I could not, because nowhere on any of the pages does it cite a source. Where did they get this information from? Even in an elementary school, my children have to cite their sources when they're turning in reports, so I would expect that a commissioned professional report would also cite their sources. And then I would also ask for the dates of the traffic study. So, they say May second to May ninth. I ask, because on May thirths, when they installed cameras at the entrance to Holly Ridge, Streamside, and Vista Point. On May fourth, at ten PM, on my way home from the hospital, the cameras were removed. I watched them remove them. So, I am very curious. I don't see that data listed anywhere about what was observed on cameras. It looks like they're only referring to the single strip across the road well west of Holly Ridge, which means they did not count any of the massive amounts of traffic going into Vista Point, Streamside, Holly Ridge, or even the shopping plaza.
Time, but I would absolutely encourage you. You seem to have a nice letter there with a lot of detail. I would kindly ask that you submit that to the planning board.
Okay, how can we see what everybody else has submitted? Because it really does a disservice to all of us when we don't know what they have submitted, and I was not able to find that online in the packet. Is there a place I can go to find that?
My understanding is part of the public.
What are we talking about? What do you mean by everybody else submitted?
So, the two developers that submitted letters, their letters were read aloud, so that we could all hear those, and they were read aloud into the record.
That is because they were received today.
Right.
If items are received, just let me finish. If items are received after the agenda is posted, there's no way to post them to the website. They become part of the minutes when the minutes are finalized and are on the website.
So, my question is, the letters that were received for last month's meeting that were not read aloud, and this month's meeting, where can I, as a resident, go to find them?
You can find them in the minutes once they are posted to the website. They're attached to the minutes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I see a hand all the way at the back of the room.
I live at forty-one oh seven Richcrest Drive. I heard she say that you guys were monitoring accidents and traffic by Brockway and ninety, so I'm not sure if you guys caught my accident, where I got rear-ended by a school bus, right there at Brockway. This afternoon, just by the plaza, looking at all the traffic coming down Brockway, and I'm just like, I can't believe you guys are going to okay all this foot traffic, all this people coming in here on that tiny windy road. Like, this is crazy. Like, what's the study? Where do you guys publish this? Because I didn't know anything about this. We just moved there last year. We didn't know anything about any of these plans, any of this. So, we thought we got a piece of paradise up here, got lucked out, and all these plans are here to take it away from us already. Well, that's all I can say. Thanks.
Just to clarify, the traffic study was part of the files that are available for download?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Heather Spatafino. I live in Holly Ridge. Love where I live. Anyway, I just wanted to also mention that I actually have on video box trucks. I don't know if you've got, no one's really mentioning all the, you know, what tractor-trailers are going to be coming down there. There's warehouses that are being proposed. They say that they're not going to have buses. I don't believe it. I don't believe it. I, and what's going to happen when they do bus people down there? There's going to be people from all around the world, because I believe that this is going to be a new hub. I mean, honestly, he's saying these things, so it's on record that he's saying that there's not going to be buses. When the buses come, when I can video buses coming, what, there's not going to be a leg to stand on. Our road is narrow. I suggest that maybe, I am surprised that a traffic study was done. For what? They haven't, this hasn't been done yet. So, what's the traffic study? I mean, honestly, there's so many accidents that have already happened in this areas. That should be enough to say, we're not going to allow more of this to happen. I am going to speak for people that are not, that don't feel comfortable speaking right now, that there is, we already have foot traffic of Jehovah Witnesses on our private property. I don't know what they're doing, but they're walking in groups. They're also over in the adjacent development parking at their clubhouse, not knowing that it's not Jehovah Witness property. And they're parking in their, on their streets, so when there is going to be a lot of people coming for Family Day and everything like that, that is going to infringe on our, our private property. And who is going to stop that? How are we going to stop that? I'm also concerned about the value of my home, that it, you know, we're not going to be able to sell when there's going to be so much noise coming from right next door. And the noise is going to be tremendous. This morning, I'm listening to birds at six o'clock in the morning, knowing full well that that's when they play, at six o'clock in the morning, and that's only like eight people at six o'clock in the morning. It's not, it, something's got to be done as far as time, when they can play, you know, and who is going to stop this from happening? You have to understand that this is, this is something that, we need a wall, build a wall. And we also, I think, are allowed to go walk down to the river. That's something that was promised to us. AVR did us such a disservice. We were supposed to have access to the Hudson. They lied. Hudson, AVR lied about, now all of a sudden, we have an elderly home that's only for Jehovah Witnesses on our property, you know, like down there, that was never supposed to, it was supposed to be more townhouses. I just feel like you guys are letting everything snowball, and it's really devastating to us. You're going to lose taxpayers. You're going to lose taxpayers. I don't know what you want. Anyway, thank you so much.
Yes, I see a hand behind the podium there. Yes.
Hi, I'm Roberta West. I live on Pondview Loop in Holly Ridge. There's been a lot of promises made through the after-meeting from last month, and they seem to be listening to us, and said things like they're not going to put lights over the fields, that's wonderful. They're going to turn the fields, keep them a little bit farther away from our border, that's wonderful too. They're not going to let people from outside the community come in there, and that's all wonderful. I just want to make sure that these things are put in writing. So, if we ever have to have any future litigation, we can easily retrieve this as evidence. Okay? Thank you.
So, good evening. I'm Kenya Gazdan. I live at High Ridge Court. I just want to reiterate that it is difficult for us not to repeat what we don't hear, and if other people's information, to the chairman, if other people's information can be read into record, all of those people that live where we live at, that took the time out to send their letters in, their letters should not be summarized by someone who feels that they are given the most pertinent information. It should be read in its totality. When I sat on the town board, and it was a big situation before us, those letters that were sent in were read in its totality, to give the residents an idea of what people are speaking about. We are all here this evening because we care about where we live at, and we care to be good neighbors. Currently, unfortunately, the Jehovah Witnesses, that project, is not being forthcoming. They currently have decreased the noise, so much so from playing these games, that we don't know that they exist. So, we know that as soon as they get your approval to move forward, they will begin to make this noise. And we're not saying that it's, you know, noise that is consistent, but it is consistent from six o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock in the morning. So, we are asking you to implement the timeframe of ten AM to six PM. We cannot continue to allow builders to come in here and tell us, the taxpayers, what they want, and that we do it for them. It is time that we stand up, and we do what is right for the people of Fishkill. And we are the people of Fishkill. We would like them to do an assessment of the road expansion, because when we say that the accidents that are happening there, they're happening there. So, if you was to travel there with your family, you too risk getting into an accident, because the road is very narrow, and you risk an accident. We are asking you that to decrease this parking. We know that they dropped it to a hundred and fifty parking spaces, but we're asking you to decrease it to half of the original, two forty-six. And why? Because they don't need it. If they walk from one project to the, to the next project, they can walk there. They don't need this space. This is typical of the projects that go up. They expand for years out. Do not fall for the okie-doke people. They are building not for today, they are building for five years from now. So, although you have an applicant before you, you have many that sit in this crowd here. They are not to tell us that we don't want a barrier wall. We want to be buried in. So, we're asking you not to continue, to continue this, this, the open, the public meeting, so that this way, they can do what we're asking. They decided without your permission to conduct a traffic study, and all of a sudden, they have evidence. They don't control you. You control the system and the rules and regulations. We do not. We want them to put in writing. We don't want tours in this community. We have learned from others that they will be busing people in. This is a, this is a transitional situation, and so therefore, we don't want that. Yes, we will greet people, we will say hello, we'll be kind, but we want to be respected in the space, in a space in which we took our hard-earned tax dollars and purchased the homes of our choice. So, we are not here opposing a religious group. We are here opposing a project that is not going to be good for us. We can't swallow it right now, and we're hoping that all of you that sit here in front of us today can't swallow it either. This is tough stuff. We've got to make sure that it is in writing, that we have access to the river. As someone mentioned before, it was said, you know, verbally, that we will continue to have access. But we know, I've been on the town board, we know that all of these side-balled deals that are not put in writing don't get put in practice. And we are asking you guys to start putting things in practice, so we can hold people's feet to the fire. I am saddened by what my people and my neighbors have to deal with in Overlook Point. They are not mad at someone who wants to visit their loved one who has aged and now is in hospital. What they are upset about is the huge amount of traffic that comes in, and the community that is so respectful uses their tennis courts and all of that other stuff to play with without permission. We cannot go into that community and play with anything, nothing, yet and still, they are disrespecting the owners that live in Overlook Point. They also are claiming to be people of their word, but guess what? When it came to paying the bond to ensure that the roads were taken care of, Overlook Point management had to put a knee in their neck to get them to do it. So, we don't want that kind of relationship. We're also asking you to see if we can consider a bond that will go into place, so that they can help take care of the roads. Those tractor-trailers that they've placed somewhere else, they're coming. They are coming. So, I implore you, I pull at your heart, and I pull at the hearts of all those that have children and people who live in this community. We stand together that these things should be taken care of, and it should be taken care of now. The residents deal with Fishkill, not the builders. Thank you.
Any other people who wish to speak at this time?
My name is Mel. I'm on Richcrest. I just want to say, as a point of reference, just living in the neighborhood, listening to the beginning of the meeting, especially the gentleman to the right, it sounds like you don't want to hear from the public. And I don't know if you really care about that, but that's what you're conveying to the taxpayers and people that live in the community. So, I would say, if you, if you want to try to care about the community, I would say, try not to shut them out and welcome us to speak up, because we, we take our time to come in here and speak too. I understand you have your laws and your rules. But anyway, getting to the point, the Jehovah's Witnesses, it's a vast organization with people. There's ninety thousand congregations throughout the United States alone and across the world, right? Thousands of congregations. They have bus tours at all complexes. And also, families drive in from California, from Virginia, they drive their personal cars, and they tour the facilities. If you don't believe me, you can go and take a look at their website, okay? So, we need to understand, are they going to have bus tours? And if so, we should get that documented. And if families are going to come in from all over, we just want to know, all right? So, that's, that's important. The other thing is, they have morning worship that starts at seven o'clock. So, the average about the light, that's the person that lives there. They get up in the morning and they go play sports. So, that's why we wake up in the morning, and we hear great cheers, and cheers, and cheers. Also, I have documented at ten o'clock at night, them playing some sort of loud drama that you could hear all over the neighborhood. I even recorded two Sundays ago, you could hear something like a big forklift or crane just banging at eight-thirty at night. So, I have the videos. at night. So I have the videos. I know one of the gentlemen said, well, you know, whatever about the videos. So, but I think you guys should entertain videos or whatever else when we do have these hearings. So I'm saying this to say that we need a wall. And whatever it takes to get a wall, or to get a study on a wall, I think is very important. Because the way some of you guys come off is though you don't live in houses in the neighborhoods, and you don't have kids sleeping at six o'clock in the morning with noise. So if you wanna be considerate about our feelings, then everybody else that spoke about a wall, I think you should give us the opportunity to get a study on a wall, or whatever it takes to get a wall, I think we should get it. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any. Okay. So I think at this point is where we're gonna have our board discussion as, and I'd like to introduce our consultants for their advice as well, as to whether the public hearing should be held open to the July 14th meeting. There were some comments brought up tonight regarding sound barriers, that it seems that several, if not many, are requesting, and the need to investigate that further, in addition to the traffic study that was received, but we have not received any comment from our consultants at this point. So based on those things, as well as some of the other items that were brought up tonight, I'd like to know if, Dominic, what your thoughts are on the appropriateness of keeping the hearing open, or considering it for closure?
Yeah, essentially, you know, it would be the preference of the board. There's three options that you have. I mean, one would be to close the public hearing. Second would be to close the public hearing, but allow additional time for a more written comment for a period of time. And then the third option would be to keep the public hearing open to the July 14th meeting.
But based on the topics brought up tonight, you know, traffic study, receiving comments, sound barrier, are those?
I mean, from my perspective, I think that the public comment, you know, is very useful and instructive to the board, because it identifies issues for the board to consider as it's reviewing the project. From my perspective, it's not necessary for the public to continue to be able to comment on specific aspects of the plan. The public is really, their best, their best role in this process is to identify what concerns that they have for the board. And so I think that there's been a fair opportunity for that to have occurred to this point. You know, this board ultimately is also going to have to decide whether or not this project is gonna require an environmental impact statement or not. And if there is gonna be an environmental impact statement, then there's going to be several significant opportunities for the public to continue to comment throughout that process.
John, are there any other items for us to consider at this point, in terms of the public hearing being held open?
No. All I would say, or to add to counsel's comments, is regarding the traffic, because of some scheduling conflicts, we were not able to get that reviewed in time for tonight's meeting. But our in-house expert has begun the review, and believes that she will complete it by the end of next week. So we should have that wrapped up with comments for you to consider, be well in advance of the next meeting. So really, you know, it's truly up to the board whether you would like to allow the public to once again comment on items such as traffic and noise.
All right. I think this is an appropriate time to go down the line, the board, and get their thoughts on which they would prefer to see at this point. Vijay, I'll start with you.
I heard some comments about the noise pollution. I think we may-
The microphone.
I heard some comments about the noise pollution out there, and the barriers that the applicant has suggested. Should we relook into those, or I feel like that may have to be relooked into it. You know, the applicant's suggestions were commented on, right?
Those could be items that we could discuss during the project review, and request that the applicant provide. But in terms of whether we have enough to close the public hearing, if we've received enough input, we have the traffic study in hand, we've received public comments. So in terms of items that we could request, that could be discussed during the project review. And Dominic, if I'm speaking out of turn?
No, that's correct.
So keeping the public comments section open for next meeting, or?
Or we could leave a written-
It's really, it's really the board's preference as to whether-
I would prefer to keep it open, if you-
Bob?
I was speaking with Felix about our concerns about the fact that this development's got this fields and this sporting stuff on it. And the concerns, it seems like a lot of people are concerned about the hours, the use. I don't even know what the light, I didn't get a chance to really look about lighting, you know, whether it would be something that they would use, you know, the long hours. I guess there is a lot of noise. I've always been concerned in this, the whole town itself, the development of the infrastructure, of the traffic study, because of the road being so narrow and everything else. It just seems like we just forge ahead, without really understanding the safety of the citizens to a certain extent. I'm, yeah, I'm about keeping it open.
Robbie?
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of leaning to, I mean, we had the public hearing for the last-
Can you, can you, can you?
I mean, we had the public hearing for the last three months. So I'm assuming we have enough time for the public to come and speak in front of the board. I'm leaning towards allowing the public to comment online for the next two weeks, maybe three weeks, but not keep it open till the next month.
My feeling is this. It seems like every month, they come up with something different, which is helpful to us, right? So I really think we should just keep it open at this point. I don't think it's gonna slow down the project in any way. You know, I heard some stuff today that, you know, I think is very, very important for us as planning board members, and, you know, so I really wanna keep it open. I don't know what's gonna happen next month. They may give us something else that we don't know about the area. I mean, you know, I don't live there, so I don't know what they go through. But I don't think it's gonna slow down the project in any way. I wanna keep it open for another month, and see what the traffic study comes, see if they have any comments on that. And then I think maybe at that point, depending on what happens next month, we can probably close it then. That's my feeling on it.
Fred?
I'll make it simple, since I'm the end. I agree.
Jody?
I would say keep it open. I totally understand what they're going through. I get it. And some really good points were brought up. Toxins, I did not realize that there was some sort of something there. That should be looked at, because we're not just talking about a situation where a few people may get sick. It could affect children, it could be generations. We don't know. Who knows? For all I know, it could be a superfund site. I really don't know. The road, that is a big consideration. That should be looked at. We already had an issue on that road with the septic. Maybe a bond should be put in place. I don't know. I'm new to this. I'm trying to understand. I came onto the board to help the community, and I really wanna do that. I understand it from both sides, but I think it should be kept open till we can get the answers that we need to put our heads down at night and know we did the absolute best, rather than to just push something through that may have long-term, very long-term consequences. That's my opinion.
Thank you. So I'm hearing a consensus of to keep the public hearing open to the July 14th meeting.
Yes. If that's the case, then a motion to continue the public hearing at the July 14th meeting would be appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Before we do vote, I do wanna let the board know, during the project review, the applicant at the last meeting, and also at this meeting, has prepared a letter going through some of the major topics that have been discussed to date, and in some cases, and in most cases, offering suggestions for mitigation. I would strongly ask the board to provide input on each of those items as to mitigation that they would like to see, and how that could be incorporated into the plan, including some of the items that were brought up tonight. Because at the last discussion, I don't think there was enough, honestly, enough input provided by the board. And we need to, you know, as some of us mentioned, that we need to get to a point where we can have the information. Well, we do have information. The board needs to provide input toward that regard, as to what needs to be provided, so that we can get to a point of making a determination of significance. So I would-
Yeah. I mean, on that point, if I may just expand on that, I think it would be helpful for the applicant to walk through their latest submission that was made on May 25th, including how they are proposing to respond to public comment that was made to date. And also, that portion of the meeting, which will occur later, is open to the public. And so I would encourage the public to listen and hear what it is that the applicant is proposing to do at that time.
To clarify, we would not be accepting additional comment at that portion of the meeting, but the public hearing would be open in July, and additional comments would be allowed to be received, in addition to email between this meeting and the next.
Correct. But my only point was, is that members of the public are interested, they should hear what the applicant's proposing to the board, and to hear what the board's concerns are at that time as well.
Indeed. So I jumped in, and there was a second, so we have to take the vote on that. All those in favor to keep the public hearing open until the July 4th, 2022 Planning Board meeting, please say aye.
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 Oppose? We do have an extension, but we do have a full vote. So that is a full vote of 7-0 to keep the public hearing open. We will continue discussion of this application a little later tonight on the agenda under project reviews.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just say one thing before we could move on. I just had a couple things-
Just that microphone, please.
Kelly, I can't see her. I know she's back there. Kelly, you gave us a lot of great stuff today. If you have anything else, please make sure you send it to us, 'cause I wanna hear everything you have to say, please. And Mel, I don't know where Mel is, he's back there somewhere. If you have videos, here's the thing, we don't wanna have videos during our meetings, but if you have a video that you think is important, please send it to us. We'll watch it. I'll watch it. We all watch it. So please, do me a favor, send it. Don't, you know, don't be shy about sending anything to us, okay? So, and the last thing, I just wanted to address the part about reading all the letters out loud. Just so everybody understands, on a practical level, it's really not practical for us to read every letter out loud. Some projects, we only get two or three letters. For like Van Wick, where I think we had like 50, 60 letters. You know, I remember for Continental Commons, which is coming up later for an extension, we had hundreds of letters. If we were just sitting here and reading all the letters, and some of them could be four or five pages long, you know, we already go to 11 o'clock every night, pretty much when we're here. Last meeting, if you were here, if you stuck it out with us, we are here to close to 12 o'clock at night. If we had to read every letter out loud, we'd never get the business done that we need to do here. So we do read them. They're important to us. I know I read them all. I think everybody on this board does. We do value the letters, but the practicality of it, to be able to read every single letter out loud, is not something I think, you know, would make sense, okay? And I know when I spoke to Anthony, some of the letters in different projects, and in this one too, have contained things that are not in our purview, but also are very, I would say, very offensive to read, very difficult to read, and sometimes bigoted in a sense. And that's something we wouldn't wanna read out loud either. So these are just things I want the public to understand. We do read them, but, you know, to read them out loud, and I would never wanna read something out loud that I've read that are just outright bigoted statements. It would be something I couldn't do. So I just want the public to understand that too, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. I think we're ready for the next agenda item, and I saw Mr. Cantor outside, so I'll gladly relinquish the seat. Until later.
Okay, I think I'm all set. Okay. Thank you for your patience. All right, so we are going into project reviews. We have LMD Home subdivision, forward to review submission made by the applicant's representative on May 25th, 2022, draft EAF Part II and III, draft negative declaration, draft resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval, and draft freshwater wetlands water course water body permit. Sounds a little bit more complicated than I think it will be, but so why don't we start off, welcome, Mark. If you have anything you'd like to go over before we get into the draft seeker documents?
No, I just, we have comments. I believe our attorney, Mr. Cantor, couldn't be here this evening, and he's asked me to follow through, and I believe he's forwarded on a memo to Mr. Cordisco. And if, just, we have a couple comments, but if you wanna move to the other items first, that'd be-
Yeah, I think we need to do the seeker documents first, and then we'll get to the resolutions. Okay. Natalie, welcome. Natalie Barber is our conflict engineer from H2M Architects and Engineers. I know you have an engineering memo again for our review, so if you could go through that real quickly.
Hi, thank you for having me again tonight. I will be very quick about our memo. So essentially, our memo just lists the minor plan changes or actions that I think the board still needs to take on this application. Your resolution is drafted such that we can review any final changes as part of your condition, conditional action. So I don't think there's anything really here that I need to go over with them in detail. And we can move forward on the seeker documents if you'd like.
All right. Let me just ask the board if there are any questions on Natalie's memo before we get to the seeker documents. I think it was pretty straightforward.
No.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and- Yeah, why don't we go ahead and start off with the draft EAF Parts II and III? And also, we might as well go through the draft neg deck at the same time. So Natalie, if you want to just run through them real quickly.
Sure. What's your typical practice? Would you like me to just kind of read the overall answers to, you know, the headings, or, you know, do you want me to go into detail? How do you typically handle that? Sorry.
I think what we can do on the full EAF Part II, just quickly explain why you may have checked yes on the ones that you checked yes for, and on the other ones that you checked no, we don't need to really say anything about those.
Okay. So we did circulate our copy of the Part II EAF, and you know, for I think most of these items, we've indicated no, but there are a few that are yes, so I will review them with you. None of the impacts we found to be moderate to large, but where I've indicated with a red arrow, it could be essentially a small impact. So impact on land, we indicated yes. The two areas that we thought that there could be a small impact, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than a year or in multiple phases. The applicant's represented that the construction will occur for up to three years, but it will be intermittent, so we think that's a small impact. The proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. The applicant has prepared a drainage report and an erosion and sediment control plan, and disturbance is not occurring on steep slopes, so we believe there's a small impact, and the applicant's implemented appropriate mitigation measures to prevent any, you know, moderate to large impacts. Second, impact on geological features, we indicated there will be no impacts. Impacts on surface water, you're going to be considering action for disturbance on the adjacent area for the wetlands, so this is where this comes into play. We did indicate yes. Part D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater titled wetland or in the bed or banks of any other water body. We've indicated that the construction is proposed in a previously disturbed area adjacent to Baxter Town Road. We believe that this would be a small impact, if any, to the adjacent area of the wetland. We've also indicated for Part H, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. Again, the project is upstream from the regulated wetland WF20. Runoff and sedimentation are controlled through the erosion and sediment control plan that the applicant prepared. A drainage plan was prepared by the applicant, and additionally, the culvert pipe that is existing under Baxter Town Road is existing to remain, and the applicant is not creating a new discharge to the wetlands. So that was a small impact. On four, and please feel free to stop me if you have any questions, but I'll just kind of continue on. Impact on groundwater, we put yes. Basically, for Part A, the proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells. The applicant is going to be served with water from the Village of Fishkill, so obviously there will be a small impact on the demand from the Village of Fishkill, who has already consented to providing water service to the applicant and their subdivision, so we think that's a small impact. Part D on this section, the proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater. The applicant is proposing septic systems. These have been approved by the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral Community Health, and the design is completed in accordance with all of their requirements, so again, small impact if any. Impact on flooding, no. Impacts on air, no. Impacts on plants and animals, we selected yes for this. And for Part A and B, we indicated that there could be a small impact. For A and B, the EAF identifies the site as an area for potential presence of habitat of the Indiana bat. The applicant provided a habitat suitability assessment identifying species and suitable habitat as non-detect, and the applicant is going to be required to submit a consultation request to the DEC as part of your action, and that's also listed in the negative declaration. So we think that there is nowhere small impacts based on the information that the applicant has provided and also the submission to the DEC. Impacts on agricultural resources, we indicated no. Impacts on aesthetic resources, no. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, we said no, and also, there was an indication from Shippo on dated March 16th, they also agreed with that finding, no impacts. Eleven, impact on open space and recreation, no. Impact on critical environmental areas, no. Impact on transportation, no. Impact on energy, no. Impact on noise, odor, and light, no. And impact on human health, no. Consistency with community plans, no. Consistency with community character, no. And just to be clear, those things are related to being inconsistent with those things, so I didn't want to confuse anybody. So that's all we had. Does anybody have any questions?
Anyone on the board, questions, comments?
No.
All right. Part three is really just the administrative page that goes with Part II. Why don't you go to the neg deck and run us through that?
Should I just kind of go to the reasons for supporting the determination? Okay.
Yeah, you can just, of course, for the public's information, most of Page One is just kind of standard format for project information.
Okay. So a lot of this is repeated from what I just reviewed in the EAF Part II. This is an unlisted action, and this is a notice of determination of nonsignificance or a neg deck. The reasons supporting this determination, I'm not sure if you want me to read that first paragraph, so I'm just going to go into one.
No.
Okay. The project may involve construction that continues for more than a year, but the activity will be intermittent. Erosion and sediment control measures, including silt fencing, will be implemented to contain any siltation on site. Additionally, construction is not proposed on steep slopes. A stormwater pollution and prevention plan is prepared demonstrating post-development flows are less than pre-development flows at the design point. The proposed action requires construction within the 100-foot regulated adjacent area of DEC-regulated wetland WF20. Construction within the buffer includes but is not necessarily limited to the construction of two proposed driveways, water service and main connections, and detention basin grading. Baxter Town Road is an existing travelway that separates the proposed project from wetland WF20. Some of the area of proposed construction would have been previously disturbed by construction of Baxter Town Road. The proposed action proposes to utilize an existing culvert crossing Baxter Town Road, and the existing drainage patterns from the site are unchanged. A stormwater pollution prevention plan and erosion and sediment control plan have been prepared by the applicant to manage stormwater and erosion sedimentation generated from the site during and post-construction. Additionally, the applicant prepared a wetland report investigating the soil features, vegetation, and wetland hydrology at the site. Such report concluded, based on observed field conditions, that no wetlands are located on the site. The applicant has applied for and submitted materials supporting a local wetlands permit for authorization by the Town of Fishkill Planning Board. Additionally, the applicant shall secure a written determination from the New York State DEC regarding the need for freshwater wetlands permit and provide proof of the same prior to issuance of any building permit for any lot within the wetland jurisdictional area. Number five, the proposed action may create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells. The project was reviewed by the Village of Fishkill for available capacity and willingness to serve, and the village has provided their consent to supply water to the subdivision. Number six, the proposed action may require wastewater discharge to groundwater. The proposed septic systems have been reviewed and approved by the Dutchess County Department of Health, and the design is completed in accordance with all regulatory requirements. Additionally, no impacts to groundwater are anticipated. Seven, the proposed action is located in an area flagged for potential presence habitat of the Indiana bat, which is classified as endangered in New York State. The applicant provided an Indiana bat habitat suitability assessment report concluding that the site is not suitable habitat for Indiana bat. Additionally, the applicant proposes limited tree removal essential only to the construction of the proposed home, driveway, water sewer, and drainage facilities. Limits of disturbance as proposed on the applicant's plan will be adhered to with reasonable discretion as approved by the building department necessary for construction of the proposed homes. The applicant is required to submit a consultation request to the DEC to confirm presence and potential impacts of Indiana bat species as regulated by their authority. Number eight, the proposed action is located in an area designated sensitive for archaeological sites. On March 16th, 2021, the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation issued a letter to the applicant indicating no properties, including archaeological and/or historic resources listed in or eligible for the New York State National Registers of Historic Places, will be impacted by this project. Number nine, the proposed action will not result in any impacts on geological features, flooding, air, agricultural, aesthetic, open spaces, and recreation, critical environmental areas, noise, odor, and light, and energy resources, or transportation systems, human health, community plans, or community character.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Any comments or questions from board members on any of those documents?
No.
And how about you, Dominic? Any questions or comments?
Nothing for me, sir.
Okay. All right. Who would like to make a motion to approve? Let's start with the draft EAF Parts II and III for the LMD Home subdivision as reviewed tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it?
So move.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero, I believe. All right, how about a motion to approve and adopt the negative declaration for the LMD Home subdivision as discussed tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it? Some would like to make a motion?
So move.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
That was Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The neg deck passes a seven to zero. Okay, now let's move on to, there are actually two resolutions, but let's start with the draft resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval. So as Mr. Day mentioned, the applicant's attorney, Richard Cantor, sent a memo to Dominic and the planning department requesting revisions in some of the resolution conditions. I'll turn to you, Dominic, and ask how you would like to handle those, and then ask you to go through the resolution.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Richard Cantor did provide a memorandum, and that came in late yesterday. And that was also circulated to yourself and also to Natalie. Natalie provided very helpful comments in connection with the resolution and the comments by Mr. Cantor. I think that I'm happy to go through the resolution at this time. I'm not sure like what the board's preference would be as to whether or not we want to go through it, and then perhaps have Mr. Day comment as we get to particular sections that might be a concern. I think some of these are just clarifications or misunderstandings.
Yeah, no, I think that's it, but we just wanted to make sure and was hoping that, you know, we can make these, you know, these changes later on, but adopt it tonight if possible.
Well, why don't, you know, why don't you go through the resolution?
Yeah.
And then, as we get to each item that was in Mr. Cantor's memo, we will recognize you, Mark, to, you know, indicate what the concern was, and then we'll address each one. I'm hoping that we can go through them. Some of the, some of the concerns might be legitimate or on point and accepted as revisions. Others, I think we'll be able to explain why we have the resolution worded as it is, and so why don't we handle each of those individually?
So what the board has in front of it is draft number four. It's dated June, excuse me, June 6th of 2022, and the first two pages are a summary of the application and its procedural status to date. On the bottom of Page Two, there are certain findings that the board is making in connection with the proposed six-lot subdivision. It is that last whereas on the bottom of Page Two, and I'm just going to, for the sake of time, I'm going to paraphrase if I may, that this, but this is nonetheless important because the board is making certain findings in connection with the application. And the first one would be that the proposed subdivision is part of a plan for the orderly, efficient, and economical development of the town, and that paragraph goes on to that with greater detail in connection with that. And then the second finding would be that the application is not subject to the Town of Fishkill Code Section 15079 regarding aquifer protection overlay. The third finding would be that a certificate of appropriateness pursuant to Town of Fishkill Code Section 150137 for historic structures and site regulation is not required. The fourth finding is that the proposed final plat is in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat, and as a result, a public hearing on the proposed final plat is not required. This was also in Natalie's recommendations in her memo. And then the last finding is that the planning board's determined, based on the present anticipated future need for park and recreational facilities in the town, that either parklands should be created, or in the absence of the creation of parklands, that a recreation fee in accordance with the town's schedule should be paid for the new lots that are being created as a result of the subdivision. Then it goes on for the specific conditions. There are a number of them, including conditions that have to be satisfied prior to the signature on the final plat. The first one is that the owner's consent block has to be signed and dated by the owners following the last date of revision on the plans. There are also easements and agreements required regarding the detention basin and the declaration of a waterline easement for the benefit of the Village of Fishkill. There's also a declaration of a waterline easement on Lot Five for the benefit of Lot Six, and a declaration of a common driveway easement and maintenance agreement. These are required and have to be submitted for the final review to the board's conflict engineer and as well as myself for our review and comment. I should stop at this point because Mr. Cantor asked, you know, what revisions there were. I had, Natalie had actually previously recommended some minor changes, but helpful changes nonetheless, to the declarations, which I had forwarded on to Mr. Cantor previously. I'm happy to pull out those memorandum that were previously forwarded and resend those so that he can have those comments in front of him.
Okay, just so the board's aware, Mr. Cantor said he is not aware that there were any changes being requested, so if that's the case, I don't believe there's a problem doing it, he just is not aware of it.
Yeah, that's fine. I can re-forward my prior email with her comments.
Okay.
Then as far as continuing on with the conditions, number three would be the final plan revisions, that the applicant shall submit proof of satisfactory compliance, including addressing the review memorandum of Natalie dated June 3rd. Fourth, that the final subdivision plat shall include the planning board approval block as follows, and then it has the approval block. Fifth, outside agency approvals required include the endorsement of the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for the realty subdivision approval for the water supply and the sewage disposal systems. Six, the applicant shall secure written determination from the New York State DEC regarding the need for a freshwater wetlands permit, and if a freshwater wetlands permit is required, the applicant shall secure such permit prior to the issuance of any building permit for any lot within the wetland jurisdictional area.
All right, if I could jump in there. We, we are seeking a permit. I don't think I'm going to get a written letter from the DEC saying we need a permit. We've already met him out there, and our biologist has already submitted for a permit.
Right, so when you secure the permit, it should be submitted to the building department prior to your first building permit.
Correct. Is that prior to the plat being signed?
The language in number six specifically says the applicant shall secure such permit prior to the issuance of any building permit.
Okay, so, okay, but the...
There's a conflict.
Yeah, there's a conflict.
I would like to weigh in also on our customer practice view. Usually when things are, need to be taken care of that require, Johnny, correct me if I'm wrong, because you've been with me the whole step away. We try to get a handle on that before the building permit is issued, because unfortunately, there's not necessarily communication from the building department that that item's been received, so we have the plat, and that's kind of our collateral to make sure everything is done before the chair signs.
Oh, so you would prefer actually for that to be...
That's what we do. That's why those conditions are listed, one through 13 at the end. That's why we did it that way.
And I'll concur with Debbie that that is how we usually handle it. So would that...
I'll bring that up to the board, but that's the way it's been handled for a long time now.
So then we can essentially eliminate that language prior to the issuance of any building permit, and it'll be reflected. and it'll be reflected in, I think, the paragraph leading this, that it's required prior to signing.
So why don't we just, since we're probably gonna try to address these as we hit each item, are there any thoughts from board members on, so the suggestion is that we strike the wording in the third line permit prior to the issuance of any building permit and that would mean that this item would have to be completed prior to the signing of the plat?
That's correct.
Any thoughts on that from board members?
No.
Okay, unless I hear an objection to changing the wording as I suggested, we'll move on to the next one? Okay.
And then so that would be the language that reads prior to the issuance of any building permit for any lot within the wetland jurisdictional area. That language would be removed from that clause number six. And I think the rest of the paragraph can stay as it's written. And if I may continue?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So condition seven would be prior to the issuance of any building permit for any lot, the applicant shall provide a response or proof that a response is not required from the DEC to a consultation request submitted to them, the New York State DEC, to determine the presence and potential impacts of Indiana bat species at the site. This is really carrying forward the condition and conclusion that was included in the negative declaration that you just adopted.
I just wanna chime in. I mean, we've already done a habitat assessment and it was also in, in, I believe, the neg deck that there are, there is no habitat out there. I'm just gonna, I don't believe the DEC is gonna consult with me about what we've already determined's not there.
In my experience, they would be willing to do that and also just to kind of reiterate, this has been a comment in our memo almost since the beginning of this project.
Well, I know, but I've never commented about it because we've already done an assessment, which.
Well, I mean, it kind of carried with this language, I think, so.
But do we agree there's none out there? We've already done the assessment.
You've done an assessment and the DEC should be consulted on it. I mean, I think this is giving them flexibility.
But we're getting a permit from the DEC, they would have, they would already know about this. Correct, Dominic? I mean, we're submitting for a permit, they know about the habitats.
You're submitting a permit for the wetlands.
The wetlands, but that's still a general, they, all departments look at that. Am I wrong?
I don't know, I, my sense is DEC is fairly segmented and so it would be probably a totally different.
Not when you're seeking a permit or not.
Well, maybe you're more optimistic about their coordination.
Well, I'm not optimistic, it's 25, 30 years of experience.
Okay, let me just, let me put a hold to the back and forth. I think if we're gonna get through this, we need to be able to do this in a relatively efficient and straightforward manner without a debate. So this, why are we here? So that we can hopefully give you an approval.
Okay.
But if you'd rather defer it, we can.
No, let's go, let's go.
This language is directly copied out of the negative declaration that you've already adopted.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on, a lot consolidation plan is required. That the applicant shall submit a lot consolidation plan showing consolidation of two tax lots?
I don't know what this is. To, we've done, we're proposing a subdivision of two lots, so why would we consolidate them and subdivide them later?
It was, it was an error. Yeah, okay. So this was inadvertently included in this resolution, so it should be deleted.
So the whole heading and number eight should be deleted?
Correct.
Okay. Is that all right with the board? It's just a correction?
Yes.
And then likewise, the next condition regarding a deed of merger would also be deleted because that would be.
Well, these are, there are three lots listed in here that are not this application.
Yeah. Understood. The next condition would be the strict compliance with the secret mitigation measures required. This ties the negative declaration into this resolution. After that, there's an inspection fee that is required.
We have a question about that. This inspection, this section that we're referring to is for site plan. We're obviously a subdivision, so we don't, we think this doesn't apply. Am I correct?
So we, we do need, and I think Natalie pointed this out, that we need to correct the section number because there is also an inspection fee required in chapter 132, section 18, which also requires a site inspection fee and it has a slightly different way of figuring it out.
I will make that correction.
And let me see, actually, we had had some correspondence on this earlier. So section 132-18F in the Town of Fishkill code, which is in the subdivision of land chapter. Part two of that section indicates that an additional, this is, the first, actually, let me just clarify. The first part of the inspection fee is based on a road, which there is no new road being constructed. So that part's irrelevant, but then part two deals with an additional inspection fee in an amount determined necessary by the town engineer, but not in excess of 7% of the estimated cost of constructing the on-site water supply and sewerage systems, et cetera, et cetera, shall be paid by the developer to the Town of Fishkill. And such fees shall be used to cover costs incurred by the town in conducting expansion, inspection, I can't even say it, inspections. So I guess we, we would look to Dominic and Natalie as to how we would figure out what that fee should be. I think we had tried to figure that out through emails, but it didn't quite work out. But I believe there should be an inspection fee and we've done that before with subdivisions.
That's correct, and it would be calculated based on the estimated cost that's prepared by the.
Well, let me clarify. This is the village of Fishkill's waterline. They're donating a pipe, they're doing their own inspections.
There is no cost.
Right, so there's no.
If you wanna, if you wanna weigh in, you'll have to come up to the microphone.
Yeah, the village, we, we could have gotten the water from the, from the main on Bachelor Town Road brought up individually. The village came to us and they have a problem with the neighbor, neighborhood above us on Duncan Place and they asked us if they would put in, they would give us the material, we would run the main up to Duncan Place for them. And in lieu of that, we would give them an easement for that, for the hookups, for the water off that main. So we're doing it as a favor to them, there's no money exchanged between the village or myself or cost. And this is just the benefit of the village for the upper neighborhood. I, we don't need to do this, we can go back to just doing taps off the main on Bachelor Town for the five additional lots.
If I may, the board is approving a plan that's contingent on this water main being constructed with connections, service connections serving these lots to that main, so right now.
That's the way it's showing now, yes, correct.
That's correct, it's integral to the plan and how it proceeds. Additionally, the inspection fee would be used to cover any drainage improvements that are on site and the grading associated with the detention basin. The modest amount of $1,000 is sufficient for that purpose.
The inspection fee for the benefit of the village?
For the town.
I'm sorry, for what?
It's for the drainage.
Oh, for the drainage you're talking about. I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, so the fee happens to be calculated based on that water improvement, but it is intended to cover any site inspections that our engineer has to do.
Which would be for the stormwater improvements and any other.
Oh, that's fine, I'm sorry.
We're good, we're good, sorry.
So are we okay with the $1,000, Natalie?
Yes, I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So all we need to do is actually change the section number in that paragraph from 150-97D to 132-18.
Done.
F, you said, I'm sorry, did you say 18, F or is it 18?
Just say 18.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The next section relates to a performance bond being required. And this would be a performance bond for the satisfactory construction, installation and completion of the water main and modifications to the drainage basin.
So again, that's the $1,000?
No.
No, so how do we determine this? Because I think we had tried to get an estimate but weren't able to get it prior to the meeting.
An estimate on water improvement, the basin.
The basin and.
And the water main.
And the water main, even though we're not paying for the water main.
Correct.
Yeah, it's basically just how, it's a formula to determine how the performance bond is.
$1,000?
No, you'll have to prepare a construction estimate for us to establish the performance bond. And that'll be approved by the town board.
Okay. No, town board, town board.
Actually, you know, I think for the subdivision performance bond, because, so this is getting a little bit complicated because now we're having all these code revisions and each type of application is being treated differently. The subdivision chapter actually has a slightly different way of the performance bond working and that, as far as my knowledge, does not require the town board's approval of the amount. Whereas the site plan version does. And we probably will need to maybe figure out how to make those consistent with each other, but if you look at the code sections, I believe that's the way it works.
I think this has been, you know, in past experience and not with this board, you know, appropriate way to kind of conduct this process, but certainly would defer to the board and your attorney on that.
At any rate, I think that the way this is worded now is that we're not gonna hold the applicant to come up with an estimate prior to the approval of this resolution, but we're gonna do it in the form, which is not the way we normally do it, but in this case, I think we can do it this way, which applicant shall prepare an estimate for the performance bond amount for review by our engineer. And not sure we should keep the part in about once, I'm not sure where this bond actually gets filed.
Well, it does say in 13214 that the, it's the town board that retains the bond.
Okay, so it would get filed with the town board? But the town board would not actually be involved in the determination of the performance bond amount, apparently.
Correct.
So I think the wording of this can stay as is then, and it would be prior to issuance of the building permit.
So the next condition is regarding recreation fees. This goes back to your finding that, that no recreational lands are being proposed as part of the subdivision and so as a result, a recreation fee in the amount of $20,000 would be required. This fee is calculated in accordance with the town's current fee schedule and the calculation of the fee is $5,000 per new lot created multiplied by four new lots. Even though this is a six lot subdivision, there's two existing lots and so there's essentially net four additional new lots that are being created. This resolution is also, of course, binding on the applicant and all successors in interest. There is also a requirement that all fees be paid and escrow deposits made prior to the signature on the plat.
Could I ask, could I ask that you look at Mr. Cantor's memo, item 10, about the binding effect?
I don't think he's there yet.
No, I think you are.
Oh, is there, you are, yeah? The binding effect? Okay, the recreation, I agree with that.
Yeah, I actually disagree with Mr. Cantor. He's saying that the, this resolution shouldn't be binding on a future purchaser. But the point of having all of these things done prior to the plat being filed is to ensure that the lot is in a position where it will be ready for a building permit. And if there, for instance, something falls through the cracks or doesn't occur and yet the lot's created and then sold to someone else and then that person comes in and something's not done, then, you know, you want to be able to say that there was a condition of the approval that wasn't met. So I, you know, you know the saying, two attorneys, three opinions, but I actually disagree quite clearly with Mr. Cantor on this one.
Right, that one's fine?
Yeah.
So the way I understand it is the way it's written, it refers to the trees that show limits of disturbance, anything over it and just shall not be cut down that's outside the limit and that will go along to the next fire, to the next fire, to the next fire. So, and, and also to the stone wall. I can say to the applicant, which is me, I will do that, I will not cut any trees bigger than eight inches outside the, outside of that area. But how can I control the next neighbor if you're saying a note on a map? I mean, unless you're gonna put an easement around each tree, how?
Well, the good thing is.
Unless there's a tree ordinance, which there isn't in this town.
The, the good thing is, is that you won't have to control the next neighbor or the next owner because you're gonna, you're gonna sell. But the point of that example that you gave is a prime example because if there's mitigation measures that are shown and included on the plans as to limits of disturbance, like those are the limits of the plan. And so a future owner shouldn't be allowed to disturb beyond those areas, that's.
Well, what if he comes in and wants to put a pool or a shed? He has to submit to the building department.
Correct.
So then there should be language in here unless application is made to the town, to the building department, to whomever, that allows him, you see what I'm saying?
But there's just nothing in here that precludes that.
I've heard that before, but this, this, it's a, I don't, I'm not that worried about it.
I mean, you wanna do, I just hate to see the lot clouded with all these. A person's gonna buy a half a million dollar house and they, and they have an old tree and it's next to them and they can't cut it down. It just, it just seems un-American, I don't know, unless you're gonna put easements around everything.
Can, can they apply to the, can they apply to, say, the building department, town, whomever? I mean, it, it might just be better to put that language in this resolution? Because if this gets filed with it, it's the same as a note on a plan, correct?
Well, this resolution gets filed in town.
Well, town, it's still filed, is my point, so.
I think, Mark, you and I spoke about that condition specifically with respect to the limits of clearing and, you know, to the discretion of the building, building department.
But what we didn't speak about is i- if an applicant comes to, you know, decides to put a pool in. Right, you now, he's gonna be outside those limits of disturbance.
That's above and beyond the scope of this, I think, and I don't think that there is an issue with what you're proposing and I think the board would agree with me and Dominic on that. I don't think that the resolution needs to be modified in any way. I think a binding and effect clause is very standard practice for all resolutions. So that's, that would be my opinion to the board.
I think if the board's intent was to make sure every one of those trees that is saved is preserved in perpetuity, we would have required some kind of a, you know, deed restriction or something like that.
Right.
Which we didn't do.
All right, let's go, bro.
Okay. Okay, so 17 stays as is.
All those foregoing conclusions have to be satisfied before the plat would be signed and then be able to be filed with the county clerk's office. And then there's additional conditions that have to be satisfied prior to the issuance of any building permit for any lot. And a note shall be added to the final plat before the chairman's signature that the following conditions must be met prior to the issuance of any building permit. So, you know, condition number 14 would be the building inspector shall confirm compliance, and I'm reading off the new numbers now, so apologies for that. The building inspector shall confirm compliance with both criteria for the R40 district for coverage and building setbacks. Number 15, the applicant shall demarcate either staking or flagging limits of disturbance in the field. The approved limits of disturbance may be adjusted if deemed acceptable by the building inspector. And that section goes on, including the fact. And that section goes on, including the fact that existing trees greater than eight inch at breast height, as shown on the plan, should be preserved within the disturbance limits except where removal is essential to the construction of the home, driveway, and utilities therein.
And I'll just chime in, because Mr. Cantor did have a comment on this particular section, and I think that the last sentence could be revised, because again, this is intended to be for the applicant developing the subdivision. Existing trees greater than eight inch DBH, as shown on the plan, shall be preserved by the applicant within the disturbance limits except where removal is essential to the construction of the home, driveway, and utilities therein. And perhaps that gives you some discretion with your future lot owners.
If that's acceptable to the board.
Okay.
Then number sixteen would be the applicant shall confirm the county requirements for the driveway culvert material, inverts, pipe cover, and end sections. Additionally, the applicant shall confirm with the county that no means for energy dissipation at the, at the culvert outlet, nor trash rack at the culvert entrance crossing Route 34 should be required. Number seventeen, the applicant shall preserve the existing stone walls along Baxter Town Road, except for the construction of driveway access and utility infrastructure needed to provide adequate water, sewer, and drainage to the proposed development. Number eighteen, as required by the stormwater pollution prevention plan, the general contractor shall prepare a spill prevention and response plan and submit the same to the satisfaction of the building inspector prior to a building permit. Number nineteen, the applicant shall contact the town conflict engineer once the erosion and sediment controls are in place prior to construction for inspection by the town.
Can we try and run that one?
We're going to, we're going to do what we normally do, and that's contact Joel, no, town?
That doesn't happen that way anymore.
No.
That's been changed.
Okay.
So, in two years, if I don't build a lot, I have to call the conflict engineer to look at sediment controls and not the building department?
I think you would always start with the building department, who would contact us, or whomever the engineer would be at the time. And I would just like to point out that that is taken directly from your plan set, erosion and sediment control sheet number one, general note number one. So if you wanted to change that condition, you would have to change your plan.
Okay. Number twenty, the applicant shall provide proof of the highway work permits and compliance with requirements of the Duchess County Department of Public Works to the satisfaction of the building inspector. Twenty-one, driveway paving requirements shall be in accordance with the town of Fishkill Highway Department. A driveway permit for lots off of Orchard Place must be obtained. Number twenty-two, all exterior lighting shall be fully shielded to prevent glare and protect the night sky. Number twenty-three, the applicant shall provide proof of town of Fishkill freshwater wetlands, watercourses, water body permit pursuant to town code chapter eighty-two prior to any disturbance or construction in the wetland buffer area, which we'll get to in a moment. And be it further resolved that the applicant shall submit two copies of the subdivision plat showing the endorsement of the county clerk, as long as other additional requirements once it's been recorded, this could be filed. And also that this conditional approval shall expire within one hundred and eighty days after the resolution, and it can be extended for additional periods of ninety days each based on the extent, the circumstances that may warrant an extension. And any request for an extension must be submitted to the planning board in writing no later than the deadline date for the submission of the planning board, meaning preceding the expiration. Thank you for allowing me to paraphrase.
Thank you for going through it. All right, so any comments or questions from board members? I think we went through it in a lot of detail and did come up with a few revisions as we discussed. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
All right. All right. Can we have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval for the LMD Homes subdivision as reviewed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Felix moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That resolution passes seven to zero. All right, so you have the subdivision approval. Let's move on to the wetland permit resolution, and hopefully this one will be a little bit easier and quicker.
Yes. So this one was distributed to the board, this is draft number three, it's dated June sixth, two thousand twenty-two. The first page is a number of whereas clauses that recite the procedural history of the And the conditions of the approval begin on page two, in connection with the findings that the board is making, and that you're finding that the proposed regulated activities are consistent with policy of town code chapter eighty-two, freshwater wetlands, watercourses, and water bodies, to preserve and protect and conserve wetlands and the benefits derived therefrom. There are no direct impacts to the wetland itself as part of this application. Two, the permit issued for the proposed regulated activities is at least as restrictive as would result under application of the federal freshwater wetlands act of the state of New York. The wetland in question is a state-regulated wetland. And number three, the proposed regulated activities cannot practically be relocated on-site to eliminate or reduce the intrusion of the wetland-adjacent area. The proposed project avoids any disturbance to the wetland itself. The conditions of the approval start on page three. All work shall be conducted in accordance with the approved plans and specifications included in the subdivision approval. All work shall be conducted and completed in accordance with the approved stormwater pollution prevention plan. Number three, if any changes or modifications are determined by the project sponsor, as necessary during the course of construction, must be reviewed and approved by the planning board prior to the implementation of such changes or modifications. Number four, the project, project sponsor shall employ the services of a licensed professional engineer or registered architect to conduct periodic inspections during the construction of the proposed facilities within the wetland-adjacent area, and upon the completion of that work, that engineer or architect shall certify to the town of Fishkill that the work's been conducted in full conformance with the terms and conditions outlined herein. Number five, upon completion of construction, the project sponsor shall submit as-built drawings. Number six, the town of Fishkill reserves the right to rescind or otherwise withdraw approval for this permit in the event that the project sponsor fails to conduct or complete the work under this permit in accordance with the approved plans. Number seven, this permit shall expire upon completion of the activities specified and shall be valid for a period of one year from the date of issuance. You may extend the time to complete the activities upon the written request if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances for two additional periods of ninety days each. And number eight, is a notice of change in ownership of the parcel and/or the project covered by this permit must be filed with the town of Fishkill within thirty days of the transfer of said property.
All right, any questions or comments from board members? Or Natalie, if you have anything else to add?
No, I do not.
Okay. Board members, okay with this resolution?
Let's do it.
All right, would, well, since you said let's do it, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the wetlands, watercourse, water body permit for lands of LMD Homes, Inc., six-lot subdivision, and authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second it.
That's Brad seconding it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
We're all set. Thank you very much. Thank you, Natalie.
Yes, thank you. Board, it was nice working with all of you.
Same here. Okay, so the next item on the agenda...
You don't need mine?
Is a request for extension of approval, and this is Continental Commons special use permit and site development plan, board to review requests from applicant's representative dated May fifth, two thousand twenty-two, for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary approval. Welcome back. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Steve Merciduli with Holland and Knight for Continental Commons. I was back here in December and asked for an extension until June of this year. Again, the holdup with our ability to move forward with this project and meet the conditions is the status of the Article seventy-eight action pending in Duchess County. As I reported in the letter, the briefing now on that action has been completed, it was completed in April, and I had hoped that we'd have the decision before I came here tonight, but unfortunately, we don't, and there's no real way for me to know how long that will take, although I'll say that the court has moved pretty quickly with this petition, and I expect a, or at least I'm hopeful that we'd have a decision here in the next couple of months, which would allow us to move forward, and then hopefully not be able to be back here in December asking for more time. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but unfortunately, we, we just can't move forward with the water and sewer condition until this Article seventy-eight is resolved.
Dominic, do you have any, any comments on the legal aspects of this request?
No, sir, other than that it would be appropriate for the board to consider a six-month extension at this time.
Okay. I'll just mention that we did receive several emails, I'm not going to read them, but I'll mention who they're from. One is from Harold Delamater, one from Jamie Macado, and one from Deborah D'Amelio, all supporting the extension of the site plan approval. So, we're not going to spend the time to go through those. They all basically say the same thing in support of the extension, and they've been entered into the planning board record. Board members, any questions or comments on this one?
No.
Are we ready for a vote on the resolution for extension? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the requests by Continental Commons for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary approval to December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
So moved.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Jody sort of beat you to the punch, and so, any further discussion? I know that we're missing Felix for the vote, so we'll just go ahead with the six of us who are here. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes six to zero, and we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a new submittal, so I'm going to read the agenda item. This is for four fourteen to four fifty-three, U.S. Route nine, site development plan and CHI Acquisitions LLP, two-lot subdivision. Applicant seeks site development plan approval and subdivision approval for the redevelopment of the existing Duchess Mall property to construct a three hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and sixty-six square foot warehouse building with associated off-street parking, loading docks, and trailer spaces. The applicant seeks approval, seeks to subdivide the thirty-nine-point-three acre parcel into two lots. Proposed lot A is for the proposed warehouse and shall consist of twenty-nine-point-eight acres. Proposed lot B is for future development and shall consist of ten-point-four acres. I won't read the tax parcel number, but it's located at four fifteen, four fifty-three, U.S. Route nine, in the planned shopping center zoning district. And this would be also to refer the applications to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, town traffic consultant, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for the site plan only, and the New York State Department of Transportation and Rambout Fire District. And I'll just mention that the board will allow informal comments from the public after we discuss this application tonight. So, welcome, Mr. O'Rourke. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Richard O'Rourke. I am with the law firm of Keenan Bean. We serve as counsel to CHI Acquisitions, who of course is the applicant on this, this application before the board. Here tonight with me is Brad Vander Vliet, who is the development manager of CHI Acquisitions, along with Anthony Castillo, who is a professional engineer. He's with SESI, our consulting engineers, and he is right there. And behind him is Louis Reyes, who's from his office as well. Also here is Andrew Valeri, who's our professional engineer with Stonefield Engineering and Design, who's our traffic consultant. We have Sean Nager, who is the project manager with our architect, M&amp;H Architects. He came in from St. Louis, so you have to at least let him speak a little bit this evening. He's been waiting with bated breath. And we also have Jeff Ringler, who's the owner's representative from Hudson Properties, that's here. As you mentioned, this, this proposal is to tear down the abandoned Duchess Mall. The application is for the site development plan, as you mentioned, and subdivision approval for the development of a three hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and sixty-six square foot warehouse building with associated parking, and also to subdivide out, that's on twenty-nine-point-eight acres, and also to subdivide out in front, a total of ten-point-four acres. We submitted, I, there's probably sixty or seventy pages of plans, we're certainly not going to review all those, nor do you want to hear about all those this evening. I just want to point out, we, we have, we will be submitting a corrected submission. We had some inconsistencies stated in connection with the, the lot size on our table and on, on one of our plans, and specifically drawing SD one properly states twenty-nine-point-eight acres, but our zoning table improperly states twenty-eight-point-nine acres, and the subdivision application makes a mistake as well. We will correct that, and I've already spoken to Debbie, and we'll give corrective plans in that regard. What I would like to do, with your permission and indulgence, is have Brad Vander Vliet address the board and talk specifically about CHI Acquisitions and its background and expertise in connection with applications like this throughout the country, so, Brad?
Great, welcome.
Thank you, happy to be here. As Rick had mentioned, Brad Vander Vliet, and with CHI Acquisitions, we are the development arm for Crowe Holdings Industrial. We are an industrial developer based out of Dallas, Texas. We've been in business since the nineteen fifties, which used to be Trammell Crowe Companies, which was subsequently sold to CBRE in two thousand and six. The family had spun off, and we have retained ownership of Crowe Holdings and Trammell Crowe Residential. We've built over, I believe, sixty million square feet of industrial space throughout the country. We have twelve offices throughout the country. We are well-capitalized, we're probably one of the top three developers in the country of industrial space. You know, we've got over five billion in assets we retain ownership of, and we would be retaining ownership of this asset as well if we're successful in our application with the board. A little bit about Crowe Holdings, kind of what we do, a little bit about, plus I'm not sure if there's any questions or...
Good, no, that's, that's great. Thank you. Since this is really the first meeting where we deal with acceptance and referrals, you know, if we, just give us a little bit more about the project, but not, not a lot, so, you know, we'll really get into the review at the next meeting.
I've, I've seen your agenda, so I understand that, but with that, what, perhaps what I could do is turn it over to Anthony Castillo, our consulting site engineer, so we could walk you through the plans, and then, of course, if you have any questions regarding the traffic studies or anything else, our traffic engineer is, is here as well. We wanted to make sure we were here in full complement to answer any questions you might have. And then finally, if Sean Nager, our project manager with our architect, could show you a couple elevations, it might be helpful for you to get a sense of perspective of what we're proposing, so...
Excellent.
With that, Anthony?
Good evening, members of the board. Again, my name is Anthony Castillo, a principal at SESI Consulting Engineers. We were involved with the preparation of the site plan package that we have submitted to you and is in front of the board at present. Apologize, just need to navigate this a little bit here. Okay. The screen I put up before you all is our sheet, S1. Basically, it is a general overview of our site plan. So to get a little bit more into the project, what we propose is, yes, as the attorney had mentioned before, it is a 350,000-square-foot warehouse. Generally speaking, what the project entails is, number one, there will be two areas of loading docks for this, that will serve this building. One on the buildings proposed on its western side, the second on its eastern side. Will also be flanked on its north and south ends by car parking areas. In addition to that, there will be truck access. There is a portion of the development that will provide for trailer spaces. In addition to that, also, there will be, just to clarify a little bit in terms of the site access, the two points of current access onto the property from Route 9, those will remain as part of this redevelopment proposal. As the attorney had mentioned before, the redevelopment here is proposing to take a parcel and break it to lots A and B. What I'm discussing here is Lot A. There will be easements that would allow for access, to allow vehicular access from Route 9 through Lot B onto Lot A, and navigate the property as I show on the plan. Excuse me. The southernmost, if you will, access point from Route 9, which currently allows for access to the neighboring property to the west, will continue to do so. There will be access easements to allow for that to continue as such. Generally speaking, in terms of grading and topography, we look to maintain the same exact scope, which in generally speaking, topography flows in a east-to-west format. We look to keep that, maintain existing drainage patterns. We recognize that the site is previously, it is currently, has been disturbed with existing stormwater systems that discharge out towards the Clove Creek. We look to continue to do so with this application. Excuse me one second while I go down, and I want to just very quickly... So, in terms of stormwater, discussing the proposal here, we propose to submit a, and we have already submitted a very comprehensive stormwater plan that would meet not only the towns and also the DEC stormwater regulations. We propose to employ a number of underground detention systems, along with treatment systems, in order to meet the full extent of New York State DEC's requirements, as well as the towns. And the intent is to make sure that, again, we do not modify in any way any of the existing drainage patterns, and we want to make sure that we do not create a negative impact in any way, shape, or form to the Clove Creek, which runs, I believe, in a south-to-north pattern, just past the other property boundary to the west. In addition to that, not to get too much into details, I want to give you an overview. We have prepared a fully compliant lighting plan, landscape plan, that certainly will meet the intent and purpose of the township code. In terms of utilities, we certainly will be coordinating with Central Hudson Electric Gas and Verizon as well. Any utility poles that may have to be relocated as part of this development, redevelopment, we will certainly look to work with all agencies as such. That's all I have at the moment.
Thank you.
All right. Just mentioning three things very quickly. Number one, and that is, obviously, we're well-familiar with the newly adopted Act for Protection Plan. The property will be serviced by public water and sanitary sewer, and so pursuant to that code provision, since we comply with all of those provisions, we will be asking for a certificate of appropriateness in that regard. Insofar as the state historic preservation office is concerned, we recognize our location, and so that we will be addressing those issues as well. Finally, it's a permitted use as of right, and so in that respect, we're going to be hoping to move forward expeditiously. I just would note respectfully that the one thing where we have what we consider to be a rather significant waiver is that your code requires 387 parking spaces. We believe, based upon the Institute of Traffic Engineers, and our traffic engineer is here as well and can discuss that if you wish, we believe that based upon the ITA standards, the average parking demand for the warehouses such that it would be necessary to have approximately 137 parking spaces, but what we're proposing is 215, which is far less than what your code requires, but we think is certainly consistent with the ITE standards. And so that's, with that, perhaps I can turn it over to Sean if we can show some elevations quickly, with your indulgence and...
And maybe while you were mentioning parking, I'll just say, this is in a planned shopping center district.
Yes.
And so the planning board actually does have quite a bit of authority to modify and waiver the parking provisions within the PSC district.
Yes.
And I think your application indicated that you might be seeking a parking variance from the zoning board of appeals, but not sure that that would be necessary.
Wonderful, wonderful.
We can talk more about that as we proceed, but just so you're aware of that.
Thank you very much. Okay.
With what?
Advance it to the architectural drawings.
It would be the M&amp;H, I believe that's the second one. Yes, ma'am. That's all right.
There you go. You can scroll down.
All right. My name is Sean Nager. I'm with M&amp;H Architects, based out of St. Louis, Missouri. I've been an architect for over 25 years. I've been with M&amp;H Architects for over 16. I'm responsible for roughly 16 million square feet of this project type across the United States.
Could you just pull the microphone maybe up a little more? Yeah, thank you.
Response, I've been responsible for the design and construction for about 16 million square feet of this project type across the United States, really concentrating in the New York, New Jersey, Delaware, and Massachusetts markets. As previous speakers have said, this is about a 350,000-square-foot building. The proposed building will be constructed out of a insulated tilt wall, concrete panels, steel roof framing, interior load-bearing columns, and the entire facility will be protected with an ESFR fire sprinkling system. The concrete wall panels will be painted three neutral colors, a light gray, medium, and dark. There will be an accent color that you can see around the main entrance to the two offices that are located on the northeast and southeast corners of the building. Elevations include clear-story windows along the dock walls to introduce daylight to the areas in which people will be inhabiting. The maximum allowable building height is 45 feet or less. This building is 45 feet or less, as measured from the vertical distance of the average elevation of the finished grade adjacent to the exterior walls per your zoning ordinances. The building designed, is designed with the two office corners, as I said earlier. The actual office plan will be designed to meet a future tenant's needs, once we understand who that tenant is and what those needs are. The entry element itself, it's large, it's grand, it's got a very modern design intent with large expanses of glass. The canopy design is bold. It provides deep shadow lines across the building's elevation. It also helps to signify the entry points to these offices. The metal panel system that you see, it would be the kind of terracotta color. That will also be used only at the entries as part of the office composition. All rooftop equipment for a building of this nature, in our profession, we like to push these back roughly 60 feet or more onto the roof, so from the ground or from adjoining properties, you really don't see it because the parapet walls block those RTU units. So, do you have any questions? I thought we had sent over a three-dimensional rendering.
Yeah, we have it. You know, if it's in the drawing packet.
Does it list in here? Because if it isn't, then it wasn't part of the electronic.
Does it look like this? Does it look like that?
Yes, sir.
It may not, I didn't get it on the electronic copy, and that's all I can speak to.
Okay. So if there are any questions, I can take those at this time.
So you don't know what the tenant's going to be?
No, this is a speculative warehouse building, and...
Will it have refrigerators in it, or you don't know yet?
Don't know at this time.
He wasn't talking into the microphone, but he said he wasn't anticipating refrigeration, just for those at home.
Correct. He wasn't anticipating, because we don't have the clear height in order to do that.
And I'm sorry, what did you say the height was?
The clear height within the building is 40 feet. The roof height of the building, as defined in your zoning ordinance, is less than 45 feet. It's like 44 feet 10 inches at this point.
Let me just ask, this will be later in the process when we get into the traffic study and all that, but have there been any preliminary discussions with the State Department of Transportation? And this may be for someone else to answer, but I think we're just kind of going to all questions now. But have there been any discussions with DOT about any possible road improvements that may be necessary?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Valeri. I'm with Stonefield Engineering and Design, the traffic consultant for the applicant. To answer your question, yes, we have reached out to the DOT. We sent them an initial application on May 4th. We haven't yet heard back on their formal comments, but yes, that type of conversation that we expect is some type of roadway improvements, especially to build the proposed driveways in the right of way.
Okay. Has DOT been provided with the traffic study yet, or no?
Not at this point.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from board members, questions or comments? Again, I think we'll get much more into the review at the next meeting. One thing that might help for the next meeting is to, I don't think we need to get into detail right now, but it was a little bit confusing where lots A and B are actually on the site and what portions of the lot will remain for future development. I mean, those are shown, but the other question is, who will retain ownership of those parcels that are shown for future development?
Jeff Ringler with Hudson Properties, the owner of the current Duchess Mall. We would retain everything except for the 29 acres that the warehouse would sit on. So there's a section in front of the warehouse that's intended, it could in the future be pad sites, similar to the McDonald's and the bank, so that you could line Route 9 consistent with northern Route 9. And then we would still maintain the Home Depot ownership as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions for now? Why don't we see if there's anyone in the audience from the public who would like to make some informal comments about this proposal, and then we can go back? Yes? So please, give us your name and home address.
My name is Teresa Craft, Beacon, New York. All I see is a lot of trucks and major traffic, not a pretty-looking structure to greet you as you enter the town of Fishgill. Before this proposed project gets too deep in the planning board approval process and the other town boards, let's remember what we already know of the historic Fishgill Supply Depot, with the major encampment being in the same footprint as the old Duchess Mall and those strip mall stores, built in 1974, the same year the historic site was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Before this follows the footsteps of the previous agenda's applicant lawyer stating they were waiting for the results of the Article 78. Can this new submission project be made by this municipality's boards to be sensitive to what may still be buried on those hollowed grounds and do a proper land dig and assessment after the demolition of the strip mall? It was good to hear the applicant mention shippo, so at least it's on the radar. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience who would like to speak? Well, of course, have a public hearing later on in the process, but this is kind of the opportunity to just hear from the public if there are any concerns or comments about it. Okay. I see no one else who would like to approach the podium, so if we have no other questions from board members, how about, I know that this has not been referred yet to our engineer and attorney, but do you have any questions at this point or comments to make?
Not at this time. I guess I would just ask the board, in previous applications similar to this one, where DOT was involved and there was a traffic study, you also asked us to take a look at it. Is that going to be the case for this particular application as well?
Yes. In fact, one of the referral entities is actually our traffic consultant at CPL. It's actually listed in the agenda. So, yeah, it's going to be a more automatic, it's going to be a more automatic thing, yes. But, yeah, the answer to that is yes, definitely, we would appreciate and request assistance from Jennifer at CPL. And since the traffic study is ready, hopefully we could get comments from her for the July meeting.
Shouldn't be an issue.
Although we would welcome any comments as to whether the scope should be expanded.
True. And, yeah, certainly any other observations that she may have about the study, what's in it, what's not in it. Yep, I agree with Anthony. Okay. Well, why don't we, if there are no other comments from the board, why don't we see if there's a motion to accept the application? if there's a motion to accept the applications? And again, this is both the proposed four fifteen, four fifty-three US Route nine site development plan proposal and the proposed CHI acquisitions two-lot subdivision, and to refer these applications to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, town traffic consultant at CPL, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for the site development plan only, New York State Department of Transportation, and Rambout Fire District for review and comment. Would someone like to move that?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So we have an acceptance of the application and referrals will be made. Do you have any questions for us as we move on through the process?
No. We've been through this before, and we know there's a road ahead of us, and we look forward to working with the board and bringing a nice project to, to the town and a nice tax rateable and tear down a moribund structure that's been sitting there for quite some time.
Well, I'll just, I'll speak for myself. I'm really glad to see that there is interest in redeveloping the old Duchess Mall and looking forward to working with you on the proposal as it proceeds.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could step out for just a moment?
Yes, and while you do, I'll just mention, please, go ahead, that the next scheduled agenda item, which I think Anthony had indicated at the beginning of the meeting, would have been the Fishgill self-storage facility, but that was postponed to the July fourteenth meeting at the applicant's request. So we will not be discussing that application tonight.
Mr. Chair, I believe we are approaching the project review portion, the first of which being Fishgill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan. I would kindly ask for a five-minute recess to nine forty.
All right. And I'll just mention right now, so that I don't have to come back into the meeting, that I'll be recusing myself from that item.
Indeed.
And Anthony will take over as chair while I am relaxing out in the lobby.
Excuse me for interrupting, but will you be accepting any informal comments on the storage project, self-storage project?
We will not, because we are not going to be discussing it tonight. It will be deferred to the July meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And the same would be true of the other item later on in the agenda. Fine white news.
So we will be back, well, they will be back in five minutes.
All right. We're back. The next agenda item is Fishgill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan or to Review Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to, again, update the board on what has changed in the most recent site plan, and in particular, like to go through the letter that you provided May twenty-fifth, go through those items. I don't know if you have a traffic consultant here who can go through the traffic study, but I'd like to do that, and then go through the memo on dated May twenty-fifth, and go through those items that you were addressing in relation to the public hearing comment.
Okay, thank you. So, first of all, on updated plans, we have not updated the plans because the public hearing was continued, and we really wanted to hear the public comments before we updated everything, because we want to give you a complete setback, so...
And you made reference to that in your letter about things that we're going to change.
Correct, yeah. So our letter, we spelled out the things that we're going to. We would really appreciate the board's comments on, is this acceptable to you? And we can talk about those items. Did you want to do the memo first, or do you want to do the traffic study first? What's your preference?
Let's go through the traffic study. That, that seemed to be a big item, and I know you spent some time about it, but I'd like to go through that in a little bit more detail. And then, you know, our traffic consultant will provide some detail for the next meeting, so we could talk about it further then, but I'd gladly let your team provide a presentation on their traffic study.
Perfect, thank you. So we have Mr. Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering, and he will speak on the traffic subject.
Good evening. Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering and Design. Our traffic study is dated May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Just in terms of the structure of the study, it looks at existing conditions. There are seven intersections that we studied, both in the immediate area and along Route nine D, including the ramp connections with I eighty-four and nine D and Brockway Road. The traffic study, we collected traffic counts at the localized intersections. Those were collected on May third. And in addition, those are turning, what we call turning movement counts, so we know which direction people are turning at the intersection, so we can analyze those intersections. In addition, over a one-week period, we also collected what's called an ATR, Automatic Traffic Recorder, count, and that gives us vehicle speeds and any daily variations.
And what dates were those?
That was from May second to May ninth. And, you know, we want that to see variations in terms of, you know, day-to-day, because when you do your turning movement counts, you want to make sure that it's, you know, of a typical condition. The turning movement counts were conducted, we focus on morning and afternoon peak hours, pretty much from, you know, six-thirty to nine-thirty in the morning is, is the morning peak times, and the afternoon between three-thirty and six-thirty. The peaks will vary a little bit at some of the intersections, you know, along nine D versus internally off the local road network. Relative to Route nine D, we also have historical data from New York State DOT, other counts that we've collected in the past, and from other studies that have been done along that portion of the corridor. So this, this is a pretty good wealth of information in terms of background traffic data.
How about regarding to renitates?
Okay, so I'll, I'll get to that next. So in terms of the background traffic data, it's for typical conditions, typical weekday and typical evening conditions. In terms of activities at the stadium and that traffic, that's event traffic, we didn't get specifically into those operations, mostly because the time of our traffic impacts would not necessarily coincide with that, but our traffic study looks at the typical conditions relative to peak hours. There is historical data relative to traffic conditions at the stadium, but we did not get into an analysis of that. In terms of the traffic generated by this facility, we looked at what's called the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and looked at the size of the buildings and the different components of everything to create the estimates of the traffic that would be generated here. There is no credits taken for the fact that people that live in Rivercrest may go to the facility, or, so they're, they're all considered as new trips to the roadway network and extending out onto the network. In addition, we included background growth of going out two years into the future with a two percent per year growth. In reality, it's probably going further out into the future because we also included traffic for other projects in both the town and in the city of Beacon. There are several projects that are either under construction or have been approved and will generate additional traffic. So while we call for a twenty-twenty-four design year, it's likely more of a five-to-ten-year design year in terms of the background growth that we accounted for.
Did that include overlook point? There is a phase that's being constructed that has not actually been constructed yet?
Yes, that's not occupied yet. So that would be generating traffic in the future, so that would be, that's accounted for in that background. So, yeah, we have existing, we have the future without any traffic generated here from this project. That's what we would call the no-build condition, so that's included all of those projects. The traffic from this project, as indicated, is assumed that it's all new trips and it's all, you know, no localized trips, no credit for that. So it's assigned to the roadway network and, again, analyzed as if they're all new trips. In terms of Route nine D, everybody, I don't think there's anything surprising about Route nine D, in terms of that the ramps, you know, at certain times of the day with backups and train traffic and historically, you know, pre-COVID conditions, which we have counts from back in two thousand and nineteen, which were referenced also. And at the ramps, at certain peak times, were actually higher than the more recent counts. In terms of an analysis, we do an analysis per DOT requirements, standard capacity analysis at each of the intersections to see if there's any impact. In terms of the change in levels of service, nothing significant. There are some problems that exist at the ramps, there's some capacity issues in peak hours. At the intersection of nine D and Brockway, we are not changing the level of service with the additional trips that would be generated by this project. At the localized intersections in the area that were analyzed at the different loop intersections, again, level of service-wise, no issues, that we're not impacting that. We looked at accidents, I know there was a question about the accidents, and the tables that are in the report, the, the data is based on New York State DOT data. And on page nineteen of the report, it indicates that that's the, the source of where we get the data from. Those are summarized for each of the locations, and they're, at Brockway and nine D, the, most of the accidents over that period, I think there were somewhere around sixteen to eighteen accidents over the period. And, and, you know, even more recent data that we've obtained since that study was submitted from the DOT, we've gotten the last couple of years, and the pattern looks pretty similar. There's nothing, no spiking in terms of accidents. Rear-end accidents, a mixture of accidents at that location. What other factors? I know there were some questions about the, the traffic counts, but again, the turning movement counts were May, on Tuesday, May third. The machine counts are there to get daily variations, and those are done over a course of time, and that's spelled out in the report.
A question for you about the, the number of new trips generated.
Yes.
Can you speak to the number that was used for new trips generated, and does that account for where those trips are coming from?
Yes.
For example, the applicant has mentioned that many of the trips are coming from nearby as opposed to, say, from eighty-four, for instance.
Right. So, so in terms of the, the way that we did our study, okay, we haven't taken, you know, credit for, quote, nearby trips that may be from Rivercrest, et cetera. The trip, the, the peak hour in a one-hour period, we have between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-five, I believe, is the range of total trips that would be generated by the site. In terms of distribution, they would be distributed along nine D, a good portion to and from the south towards the interchange area. I think our split is somewhere around forty, sixty, once you get out onto Route nine D. And again, no credit for localized trips, that, those people that wouldn't get out onto the network, so. But that's all spelled out in, in the report. We have figures that show the distributions of, of each of those trips.
I, I would ask for our consultant, I know, I know they're in the process of reviewing the traffic plan, but I'd like them to speak to in their memo the appropriateness of the numbers being used by the applicant for new trips generated and levels of service. I, I expect they will, but, you know, I, I look at the report and I understand parts of it and the narratives, but, you know, the calculations, there's hundreds of pages of numbers and calculations, and, you know, I think this board needs some sort of validation from our consultant that the numbers being provided are in fact accurate and are reflective of what the applicant is suggesting is going to be generated by their plan. So, again, while we are reading it, again, we need that, that's the validation.
Yeah, that, that's a pretty standard format for a review of a report such as this, so we'll make sure that it addresses all those items.
And we'll, we'll address any technical comments that come up also, so that's, that's typical that we...
Understood. I appreciate you explaining the study. Are there any questions from the board regarding the traffic study?
No, I think I, I definitely need more time to look at it. Came to us two hundred pages, and gave us like about a week to look at it, so, you know, we'll have to look at it.
Absolutely. And, and we'll answer any other questions that come up as you do.
Any other comments from the board on the traffic study in particular?
Did you take into account the closing of Downstate?
I'm sorry?
Did you take into account the closing of the Downstate prison?
Not specifically, no, no. And, you know, the plans for redeveloping, it's unknown, so, you know, part of the background growth would account for some of that, but not knowing the plans, you know, that wasn't one of the projects that we included specific traffic for.
Okay, thank you. I think from our standpoint, we would await input from our consultant as to whether the levels of service you say are, are occurring with the project would in fact be the case, and then decide, you know, impact lies what happens.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Hire.
Thank you.
So let's go back to your memo from May twenty-fifth. You broke out some topics. I'd like to start, you have the project description, which I, I think you've identified the intents of each of the buildings on the site, and I think it would be helpful for you to go through that.
Sure, absolutely. So, the intent was to help people understand, because I think there were questions about what's in the buildings and what will they be used for. So on to that description, our office building, obviously offices. We will have a first aid mini infirmary set up, a commissary pantry set up, because we supply for our volunteers who live in Rivercrest, we supply food and other supplies for them as part of their being with us. There's a training room for meetings, personal services provided for the occupants of the apartment. So you'll see on the floor plans, it includes things like a barber shop area, a beauty shop area, set up small areas on the, I believe, the second floor of the plans. The maintenance building is not for a maintenance business, for people to come in, et cetera. It is a setup of shop and storage areas for our electricians, our plumbers, our HVAC group, our landscaping group, so that they have a place to keep their equipment instead of having to haul it from other locations. The recreation slash storage building is what is currently the warehouse. So right now, it is being used primarily for storage, the entire place, but what we are doing with that is that's what we're converting to interior inside recreation exercise facilities and a small section of it's storage. And again, that's for supplies that we need for operating or that our occupants will need. We'll buy in bulk, we'll store, and then we provide as they need for those supplies. The softball field, soccer field, basketball court, tennis court, volleyball court, all the outdoor recreation areas are private for the Rivercrest occupants, as we mentioned, members of our religious order, not open to the general public. And as we mentioned, there are no leagues, there are no tournaments, we don't bus teams from other facilities or locations, we don't bring in busloads of spectators, it's, it's not open for that. It's simply an amenity for the people who live there to go out and play. We have a lot of people in their twenties. The youngest that we have at the facility, just so we're aware, nineteen years of age, no one younger than that. That's part of our operation because of the type of operation we do. But a lot in their, in their twenties, early thirties, a lot of energy, a lot more than I have, who would use these facilities. And then the pavilions, meditation areas, outdoor spots to be able to go out, have a picnic, spend some time with some friends, be able to enjoy some... picnic, spend some time with some friends, be able to enjoy some passive recreation, maybe they want to throw a frisbee around or something like that, but that's the purpose of those areas. Also spots where quiet away from the main development that allows time for reflection, meditation, time to enjoy the beautiful views that are part of that property across the Hudson River. And for that, we know there is concerns about size, how many people, et cetera. We have internal limits at our facilities in Patterson, Walkeville, Warwick, Tuxedo, where we have these type of facilities, where we limit based off the size of the pavilion because we don't want it to be an overcrowded noise issue for our occupants either. And so that's why, as mentioned in the letter, we will limit the occupancy to no more than 25 people, half the pavilion. So it's not going to be huge groups of people, large, out of control parties or gatherings, that's not going to happen at these pavilions.
Is that something that the applicant would be willing to put on a plan?
Absolutely, absolutely. Some walking paths for internal circulation and for those who would prefer to walk, like our wife and I, for a walk instead of all the running and everything, that's for our internal use. And then of course, the easement, which would be allowed public access when that greenway trail would be constructed. And so those are the key points regarding the use of the facility, what we're planning. As mentioned, we will have fencing across the front and that area will be entrance will be controlled by, we're proposing to control it by access controlled security gates, so that if you don't have the access key to get through, you're not going to be able to get into the facility.
Okay, before we move on to the next topic, are there any questions from the board regarding the project description and the intent of the features and amenities on site?
What is the access to the public area off the industrial way?
Down at the bottom of Industrial Way?
Will I be able to get down there without having passed through your property?
So anyone, so Industrial Way ends at the cul-de-sac, right where we have our gates. We talked about that a little bit later, the reason for those gates. But anyone is allowed to, any member of the public is allowed to go past that gate, bike or pedestrian access down to the trail and then walk south, because the trail right now only goes south from there. We put the gates up, well, the gates were there when we bought the property. We've kept them closed and put the no trespassing signs on because we had a lot of activity down there that we were not comfortable with. We had some vandalism down there. We had people coming down late at night, parking their cars and having little parties. And so we put that there under. In the past, we've been asked about access and we made it clear in the past that people can walk through there. That's, that's an access point to the trail, that will continue. We have recently put up some temporary signage as we're waiting for some permanent signs to come that make it very, very clear that you are allowed pedestrian access to go through because we want the neighbors to be able to do that.
I have a question. What if there's an emergency down there? What if somebody needs the police, a fire truck? How are they going to get in?
We have, they can, I'll put it this way, right now, they can contact us, our main at the Rivercrest clubhouse and we will be able to let them in. Alternately, there's just a short distance, if you go around on Brockway Road to where the old rail bridge is to get across, it's derelict bridge, but there's access to the trail there and it's a very short distance between the two. So if for some reason there was a delay in us opening the gate, it would be very easy and quick to get emergency vehicles around the other way.
I'm only going to make this one comment. If there is a problem, every second counts and it doesn't matter if you have to go across the street, you still have to go across the street.
Right.
Especially if there's a fire or you know, God forbid, someone's in a medical crisis.
Right.
So just wondering about that.
Michael Demeo is our Director of Design.
That's an excellent comment. Thank you, thank you for that excellent comment.
I'm leaning in like I can hear you better from my mic, which I can't.
So what we have been considering is a bollard system that has a center post that folds down. So the bollard system allows for people to walk through, bikes to go through, but the post can be kept as a keyed device that then gets dropped down. We can keep that with the fire department, we can keep a key with police department, you know, and make it such that if there's activity down there and an emergency vehicle needs to get there, we can get them there quickly. Does that sound sensible?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board before we move to the traffic portion?
Well, would they consider these?
Well, I think we're going to get to that. I think that's a future topic here, yeah. Let's move on to the traffic. I know we already, the first paragraph there about the study we just talked about, but there's some paragraphs here about parking spaces, land banking, truck traffic. I'd like you to, let's go through that.
Correct, sure. Yeah, so in addition to the traffic study, we went back, we looked at what we would be able to go down to the bare minimum with some adjustments in our operations and we came up with the 150 spaces, so removing 96 spaces from the plans, we are committed to do that. And that's basically what these paragraphs talk about, removing the 96, which takes it to 60% of what the code requires to have at that spot with the land banking option, which we will show on the plans. We will continue to maintain our stormwater plan system as if those spaces were there, so we're going to have actually even a more robust stormwater plan than what would be needed. And then if for some reason in the future, the board said this isn't working, you need more spaces, it's causing issues, or perhaps in the future, we say, we'd really like more spaces, obviously we have to come back to you to request that and go through the process, we understand that, but that, that allows for that. And as far as truck traffic, it's a matter of what's already coming down to the warehouse for supplies, what's coming to the Rivercrest clubhouse right now, but moving what's coming to Rivercrest over to this location instead with the layout. So right now, we average seven deliveries a day, Monday through Friday to the clubhouse, seven deliveries a day, Monday to Friday to the existing warehouse, using straight right box trucks. We typically do not have tractor trailers come down there, big long trailers, semis. And a lot of that has to do with the road. We have on the past, when we've moved equipment in and out, we had some modulators there for a while. Some of you may remember when we were working with that with the board in the past. So for things like that, we've had to use that to move large out, but that's not a normal part of our operations. Our normal operations are straight box trucks that will handle that. And as mentioned, we anticipate that we might see a reduction in the deliveries because right now, we have to have, the storage in the clubhouse is so small, we need more deliveries, more regular. When is it the warehouse, or I say the warehouse, the storage facility, the office building, the setup for there, we'll have the space to bring more in, in one load.
Regarding buses, I know that came up, I believe you've mentioned it earlier, but if you could speak to that again?
Sure. So we will not be bussing in teams, as has been suggested, we don't do that. We have used buses in the past there in order to alleviate comments that we had received when we first got there about the number of cars and vehicles. And so when workers have needed to go to other locations, a group of them, we've used a bus to move them instead of vehicles to do that. That may happen from time to time. Right now, I believe there are four buses that get parked on that facility every night and then leave and go take care of our other facilities, but it's a parking location right now for them. But that is bussing, any bussing that we do is for our workers who may need to go to the other sites in order to accomplish their work. It was mentioned about bus, bringing busloads of tours in and that is true. You can go to our website, JW.org, you can go to the About Us and you can see, you know, tours and we welcome people to come to our facilities, but not all of our facilities because some of them are not set up for tours, it's not the intention for that. This will not be a tour location. This will not be a place advertised for individuals to come and tour because there's really nothing for them to see as far as their operations. Contrasting with our world headquarters in Warwick, New York, just down the road, Tuxedo, New York, we have another facility. The Warwick facility is a tour location. We have a beautiful museum there about Bibles, the history of Jehovah's Witnesses, et cetera. But the Tuxedo facility just down the road is not a tour facility. So I just bring that up too, yes, we do offer tours, but this is not a facility the tours will be offered to because we're not going to bring people in to say, here's an office door, here's an office door, here's a pantry. It's, there would be no point to that.
I would ask our consultant, Dominic Cordes, go for a second about, it would not be within this board's purview or ability to provide a condition about the types of vehicles or that sort of thing. I know there was a concern about that, I mean, is that something that's beyond?
I mean, the.
Reasonably speaking here, I mean.
I mean, the board's jurisdiction in connection with reviewing the site plan is to ensure that the site plan is designed in a way to handle the traffic and the intended use as proposed, you know, for it. Prohibiting types of trucks or types of vehicles from actually visiting the facility would be like saying that, you know, UPS trucks can't go down a certain private roadway because of objections or concerns about delivery vehicles. It's not, it's not something that's within the purview of the board, in my opinion, to prohibit types of trucks and or vehicles in the future. But you can look and make sure that the site can accommodate them, but nonetheless, you know, the applicant is, I think.
Understood. I just want to make sure that it's clear to not just the board, but you know, the public as well, what we can and can't do here. I know we want to try to mitigate circumstances as best as possible.
Of course.
Regarding the.
Could we just have one more comment?
Yeah, go right ahead.
One important thing is that the accommodations for those vehicles that we have mentioned have all been cared for with turning radiuses, backup areas, all conditions met on our site. So it's not that we're out in the public roadway taking care of those things.
Regarding your parking, you mentioned the reduction in parking spaces, are there any electric charging stations anticipated?
There are, and I think, I believe our plans show right now, there's four with potential for expansion. Jesse can point them out for you. Right there, yeah. They've got one, two, three, four, there's five, six shown on the plans right now. Yeah, so you see right where the cursor is at, just to the north of the office building, the first four spaces will be electric charging set up and then the next two are for future. As the plan shows right now, obviously with our parking plan changing, those might move to a slightly different location, but the, the plan is to provide for some now and allow for growth in the future. And by growth, I mean additional charging stations.
Yes. So there were also some comments made during the public hearing that I had picked up planned road expansion, maintenance of Brockway Drive. I don't know if those are things that you could speak to tonight, but at the very least, that, you know, if you could speak to that in our, the next memo, I think that would be something that was discussed tonight and, you know, I think that, you know, would be something we'd like to hear about as well.
We'd be, okay, we'd be happy to provide some comments on that, review it.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you talk about the parking spaces, are those for, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, are those for the residents that live there now or for visitors? Or do we have other Jehovah Witnesses coming from other locations and this is their work location?
So this work location will be for those who live at the Rivercrest facility?
And that's it? It's not, but yet some of, the Rivercrest might go to another location like Warwick or something.
Right, right now, some of them have to do that. This intention is so that we can eliminate as much as possible.
Okay.
With the understanding, like for example, my job, I work with all of our facilities, so I might drive there to make sure something is permitted, et cetera, but I won't have an office here. It's not like I'm going to be a regular worker here and this is for the Rivercrest folks.
Okay. And then my other question was regarding the road as well. Roads need to be maintained, they need to be plowed, they need to, if we have storms. Not that long ago, we had a storm and tons of trees came down, they have to be removed. So I'd be curious to see potholes filled, resurfacing, in some cases, pipes might be under there that get crushed and they have to be replaced. How would that work? That's, would be a question.
So we'll take a look at that and come back with a response on that, so.
Because you're using the roadway too, so.
Correct, correct. I will say that from a standpoint of like the, and I think that the building department can speak to this as well, when we have had the storms that came through, the microbursts, the.
Yeah.
I believe we were one of the first complexes to have all the trees cleaned up. We jumped on it right away to make sure that there were no issues, no dangers, clean it up, make it look nice again. So we're proud of the fact of the way we take care of our properties. And I understand that you're talking about the road specific, but I'm just using.
Yeah, I understand and I do, I'm familiar and I understand that, I would agree, you do maintain properties very well. This is not, I don't think this is.
This is a public road.
This is a different, this is a different situation. This is areas where other people are using it and what you're intending to do is going to have an impact, whether positive or negative, it is going to have an impact on other individuals.
Understood, understood. We'd be glad to review that though, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One of our folks is with us who lives there and reminded me that during the last storm, it took down a lot of trees on Brockway.
Yes.
It was our people that went out and cut all those trees and chainsawed all those trees out of the way, took all the debris away. So it's, it's our opportunity to be good neighbors too.
Thank you.
Any other comment from the board regarding the traffic portion that we just discussed? Or other mitigation measures that they may wish to see moving forward?
I don't know right now. Excuse me, are there children on the site?
There are no children, no one under the age of 19.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about school buses?
No, not on our side.
I think we can move on to the lighting section.
Very good. So with the lighting, obviously the neighbors wanting to make sure the lighting is properly done, so as we've been showing on all of, on our plans since we've started, downlit, full cutoff, dark sky compliant, we're very interested in making, that's our standard at all of our facilities. We have from the start not shown any lighting on the softball or soccer fields because of the environmental easement and we have no desire to penetrate and do anything to disturb that environmental easement. The lighting for the exterior basketball, tennis and volleyball courts, we've committed to removing that, so it'll be gone. None of our exterior sports fields will be lit. You'll see that on the next plans. The pavilions on the north side of the property, one of the commenters from the north side had, had concerns about lighting from that because it is the closest pavilions to a residential area and so we've removed the lighting from that and you'll see that on the next plans as well, as well as moving that pavilion as far south as we possibly can before hitting the environmental easement. So we're trying to get it away from them, remove lighting and also plant some trees around the side of that. The parking areas, as with all of our facilities, 10:00 PM, everything except for essential security lighting goes off. We don't maintain the lighting overnight as some facilities do, 6:00 AM in the morning if it's dark. When it's light, it waits and, you know, it's not going to be on when it's light outside and that's controlled by controllers that are tied to the time, also tied to light sensors as far as dusted on sensors. And then one commenter. And then one commenter was concerned about the headlights coming out of the, get my directions right, the southeastern portion of the property, the, almost like a secondary entrance. And so we've, as we've said in here, we've committed to planting some trees along that for a distance so that we can effectively screen those lights. Again, it's not the primary entrance, but that doesn't mean somebody won't come out. And so we'll plant that evergreen buffer to block that from their view.
Any comments from the board on that item?
I like, I like that they've removed a lot of the lighting, so this is good.
And I would mention, it's not in our note, but the lighting plan as it exists right now is even less lighting than what the code requires. So we're already starting at a, but we are, again, committed to making sure that we're, to the extent possible, eliminating that, so.
With the reduction in parking spaces, is the reduction in lighting for those parking spaces? So that's something to keep in mind as well.
A lot of the residents that were here tonight and seem to be the same people, I seem to see the same faces, which is fine, they're very passionate, seem to want a wall. Is that something that you would consider having a study to see if a wall would work better than trees? Is that something that would even be considered, or?
I'm going to let engineer or director of design talk to that one.
There are, there are ways to mitigate the sound, ways to buffer that sound. What didn't fully come out this evening in earlier comments was that our plan is to build mounds around the areas that are adjacent to our neighbors where there are functions happening. The baseball diamond, the end of the soccer up at the pavilions, but raise those mounds up with onsite material that we have and plant on top of those mounds. That number one, gets the block of the sound higher, you know, the screening of that. Second, it gives us a chance to be up off of the environmental easement, an additional three, four feet, whatever we can do, maybe even higher, so that we can protect any of that concern for what's below the two-foot cap that's on that area. So for those two reasons, we think that the landscaping has great potential. The challenge that we face with any kind of wall is that we have a, an easement along the east and north for the stream. So to maintain wetlands and stream buffers, you can build up to that, and it pushes the wall actually into the area of concern, environmental concern that you raised earlier in the meeting.
Thank you. So I'm taking that as a no, that we're, that the wall is, there's not going to be a study for the wall?
Please understand, we're, we're here to be good neighbors. We want to do-
I understand.
Is really helpful to our neighbors. We don't think that that's a buildable solution.
Okay.
So, but it doesn't mean that we're not willing to take a look at it.
And for the, because, please, forgive me, I really just want to get to really understand. Are you going to do a study for the mounds that you're putting? I understand the mounds, I get it. And I also understand how noise works.
Sure.
Noise travels pretty far.
Yes, it does.
I live a substantial distance away from the stadium, but the way the crow flies, I can hear them. And I'm across eighty-four and a ways away, and I can hear them. So I, I'm just trying to figure out if a study for a mound would work?
We would be happy to consider what's been offered by or requested by the public here this evening. We'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
And then come back to you, hopefully in July, with some sense of the mounds, the wall, what would be in the best interest of our neighbors.
Right.
Is that okay?
Well, you know the saying, fences make for good neighbors. So we, in lieu of a fence, we have to figure something else out because we want everybody to be happy.
Sure.
This is a great community. You guys know it, the residents of Fishville know it.
Absolutely.
I know it.
Or perhaps even offer a mitigation of doing a sound study after construction. And if the noise levels reach a certain level after construction is completed, that some additional mitigation would be provided. I, I'd like to see the applicant at least provide maybe something in their plan to that extent so that, you know, once this project's done and it's still noisy, is there, you know, perhaps a mechanism that could provide additional mitigation? So I'd like the applicant to at least consider offering something in that regard.
We appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and the challenge we face is what I mentioned earlier about where do you put it? You can't really put it on private property, really can't even put it on public property without permission. And our property has buffers until you get to a environmental cap. So we're going to struggle with that one, I'll just tell you very honestly, but it doesn't mean that we're not willing to look at it.
It may be better than if you could show a sketch that shows where, you know, where you could, that it wouldn't impact a wetland, and then that way we could see, okay, this is really-
Absolutely.
Does not make any sense whatsoever, but I think at least to see it, that, that it's been like, okay, you got a wetland, you got a buffer here, it can't be done. It's-
I'd be happy to do that.
To see it would be helpful, and also the idea of offering a mitigation measure post-construction if noise levels are reaching a certain level, that there's a placeholder or something that could, you know, better protect the residents from noisy situations. And, and I'll go right into the noise portion because I did notice the hours for the field, seven AM to six PM. I'll be honest with you, seven AM is not acceptable for me. And I, I'm not, I think ten AM. I mean, there are residents nearby. I know, I believe somewhere in your letter, you mentioned, you know, using it in the, in the vein of like a park, but it is not a park. I, I really would like to see, you know, at the last meeting, I threw some times out, and to see seven AM to six PM, that's a significant impact in my mind if it, if it were to remain that way. So I, I really think there has to be some additional mitigation offered there.
I guess, I guess from our standpoint, I understand what's being said. And the town parks that we looked at have softball or baseball fields. Some of them have houses right up against it, and the town has said, these are the hours that are acceptable. The communities, Holly Ridge, Overlook Point, Vista Point is actually the most liberal. But those communities allow for a dawn to dusk, which means that this time of year, courts that are right next to you, that also include children, could be at 5:30 in the morning, out there playing. So we're trying to address a, try to find a reasonable middle ground here because-
Understood, understood. I, and I, but I don't think you're listening to the nearby residents.
Well, if we were, okay, I want, I want to argue the point because we'll look at it.
Please, other board members, please speak up because I'm the villain here speaking up. I mean, what do you guys think? I mean, geez.
Yeah. I understand the want for, because it seems like it's all adults there, and they go to work at some point, so they're going to do something beforehand. But seven is kind of early for most people, you know, but I think, I, I think if we could find that way to mitigate the sound, because that's what we're worried about right now. So if there's no sound impact to neighbors, then I don't think they would worry about if you're doing something at seven o'clock. So I think the main thing is to try to figure out how to mitigate the sound. If the noise impact isn't there, then maybe it won't be such an issue. So I think, I think it does come down to that.
Yeah.
You know, if they can't hear you, then they're not worried if you're out there playing at seven o'clock in the morning, right? You know, so just something to think about. I think if we can figure that out, then maybe we can work the hours a little bit better.
Sure, thank you.
My opinion, but if we can't work it out, then, then we have to really look at moving those hours.
Thank you. And may I ask if we are able to, with, and I think it's primarily Holly Ridge because they are the, they are the next-door neighbors in, in this case. If we are able to work out an agreement with them, as far as hours, it would be acceptable to them, is that something the board would entertain, or is the board looking for us to just be as restrictive as we possibly can? I, I just want some input from the board.
I mean, I think time restrictions would be the most definitive way to ensure that, that noise is not going to occur before a certain time.
Right.
I'm not convinced that barriers are going to do the trick alone, so.
I, I do agree on that, on that part. Timings would be beneficial for the public.
And so I guess my question is-
But that wasn't the question.
Yeah, my question, if we are able to, let's say Holly Ridge, we are able to, because we were able, in the meantime, we were able to work out the misunderstanding that we had actually tried to contact them. They did have the message, it was just missed. It was on the phone. So they are working for, with us to set up a time for, to come on site, to talk about these issues, et cetera. If we are able to come to a mutual agreement with them about times, and we understand the restrictions, our Patterson facility, our Walkeville facility, we have restrictions on the times. And quite frankly, those are five AM till 10:00 PM, so we're reducing that here already. But if we are able to come to an agreement with them on times, is that acceptable to the board? Or at least, I should, I know you're not going to make a decision now, but is that an acceptable approach to the board? Or is the board more interested in a board applicant set time? I don't know if that makes sense, but.
I think if the applicant were to come before this board and say that they have spoken with the HOAs of the nearby developments and had something in writing from all parties that it was agreed upon time that would make everybody happy, I think that would make everybody here feel a lot better. But we got to make a determination of significance.
Right.
And the way things stand right now, noise is significant. So I don't feel comfortable, you know, I'm speaking for me. If that were in our possession and it was signed by the HOAs of the other boards, yeah, I think that would certainly play into our consideration when we evaluate that particular impact. So, yeah, I mean, I would highly recommend those conversations happen as soon as possible. But, you know, as it currently stands, based on what's being presented, in my mind, that is a potentially significant impact and one that, that, you know, could trigger additional study.
Is it only Holly Ridge HOA or the other communities also?
So Holly Ridge is what is right next to the field. I don't know if this shows it or not. Vista Point, yeah, I don't think this one shows it all the way. My apologies. So this, this property line, there's a little bit of the, there's a little bit of town property for a portion of it, and then the rest of it is the Homeowner Association and Holly Ridge on the eastern side where the fields are at. There you can see it. To the south is all Rivercrest, which we own and control. And Vista Point is there in the lower, what's our, lower right-hand corner. So it's, it's definitely Holly Ridge is the community that has the connection to where the ball fields are located at.
I agree with Anthony, a hundred percent, Anthony, I'm just letting you know. I think if you could come up with an agreement with them, and they brought it in writing, and then also had some sort of something that, some way to mediate, you know, if there's a problem going forward with noise, it gets too loud, or how can we fix it so that another problem doesn't arise?
Right.
You already have a solution or an agreeable solution. I think that would make us feel more comfortable.
I'm aligned on that, yeah, I agree.
I think it has to be a multi-phase, like, you know, there has to be mitigation and timing and everything else because what you're doing is bringing something into, like, these people were here with their residences and didn't expect all of a sudden there was going to be ball fields and things in so close to their housing. So I, I think that it's not unreasonable to be, like, people say, as a good neighbor, to kind of figure out a way because, like, somebody said, how, we can't police it 24 hours, you know? The town doesn't have the resources all the time to go and check this stuff out. So I think it has to be like a, a fold of mitigation of sound and some kind of, you know, ordinance of like what time you're going to, you know, going to do this. I mean, I'm, you know what I mean, so. Yeah, it's, it's not easy, I understand.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand exactly where you're coming from. It makes, it makes sense.
And you mentioned special events too. You know, it'd be nice if perhaps a condition could be put into that, you know, special events would be noticed to, like, you know, you mailed a flyer to-
Right.
A number of residents, that, that a special event would be noted or notified. I think that would be, you know, something that would be courteous and also helpful and something that, if we can have something like that in writing, that would be a, you know, a special event four times a year, however many times a year that that's noticed, you know? That would also be another item, another step that could be taken.
And just so the board is aware of that, since we've moved into this facility and had these events, every time we notify the, the neighbors around, just so that they know this is happening, they're not wondering. I remember the first time we did the notice, Mr. LaCola ended up calling me and saying, the, the homeowners, he said, there's a special event, what's going on, what's the, et cetera? Because they called him about it, et cetera. But that's been our practice in our history with Overlook Point, Vista Point, and Holly Ridge.
But the difference, and, and just, you know, forgive me, the difference is you didn't have the ball fields and-
Oh, understood, yeah.
That then. So the difference is the concern for the neighbors-
Right.
Is, again, the noise.
Right.
It's going to be the noise and the potential of the lighting, but I think more the noise.
Right.
And, and I get that. When you're used to being in a quiet area, having your, we all, all of us have had the neighbor that has the graduation party, the 50th birthday party, the whatever, and it's loud, and it's annoying, and you sit in your house and stew, but they just want to know that, that this is going to be okay.
Right.
So you have to figure out how to make it okay.
Understood, yeah. And we are going to look, like, we will look at the mitigation measures. We will look at what can we work with them on as far as timing. I just wanted to be the, I just wanted the board to be aware that our efforts are to be a good neighbor there. We have a very good reputation in our other Hudson Valley communities where we're at, which I know we're starting new here, and that takes time to build up.
Of course it does.
But I just want the board to understand from our standpoint, our goal is to always be good neighbors. And we know that means you're not always going to see eye to eye on things, but you have to figure out how to compromise that and work with it. And that's, I guess, in part, part of the reason of my questions is to get some direction of what type of a compromise is the board looking for or is going to be acceptable to the board because, you know, we might come up with something that we think is great, but doesn't address something we haven't thought about. So, yeah.
You keep saying the board, but, but really, it's the residents of the community-
Right.
Where this is going to be happening and we're facilitating, trying to help that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm, I guess I'm not explaining myself, but I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying. So I'll leave it at that, because I do agree with you.
Yeah, because, yeah. Thank you, thank you for trying.
I'm going to jump ahead because I know there's a few, we're running short on time, and, but security had been discussed. You had mentioned some of that already, we talked about that.
Right.
Greenway Trail access, you had discussed that. River access is something that was discussed. The tree buffer was also something that, that we had discussed.
Right.
The zoning, you know, you identify what zone you're in. And if you want to speak briefly to the, how the properties have been used, but you, you mentioned it here. Manufacturing was how it was previously used.
Correct, and could still be used today, but we're obviously not interested in that at all.
And then the environmental with the cap, which we talked about with the trees, and you mentioned a, you know, a raising, I guess, a buffer or a berm, I guess, so that-
Correct.
So, and then wetlands, is there anything on those topics that this board wants to discuss? anything on those topics that this board wants to discuss mitigation measures or anything like that at this point? 'Cause I'd like to get to.
I think, um, yeah, no, I think we're pretty good. I, I, there are kind, the main things we're talking about, I think you're, you're addressing right now. And I'm glad, um, if you could definitely talk to the, uh, other HOAs. I think anytime an applicant can, um, speak with the neighbors and come up with some, um, ways that they can all coexist well, is always a great way. It makes, at least me as a board member, feel much better about an application.
And I, I would ask the board at the, at the next meeting to, you know, uh, again, take another look through this memo and the one that we're likely gonna get before the next meeting and be prepared to have any mitigation measures that they'd like to see, um, to discuss, 'cause I think we spent a lot, probably more time than we needed to, but it was important that we have that discussion. So I'd like to try to streamline that, uh, in future meetings, so. But I, I think we would expect the same thing for the next meeting, a, a follow-up of some of the items that were discussed tonight, the, the newer topics.
Right.
And, um, and, you know, we could do that, go through that again.
Absolutely. Yeah, we could do that.
We could also try and give us a distance from the field to the nearest house?
Yes, and I believe that is in here. Yeah, so on page four, the, the rotating of the field, so that home plate is 400 feet away from the property line, 707 feet from the closest residence, and the closest outfield line, 155 feet from the property line, 478 feet from the home. And then soccer is 611 feet from the closest residence at the closest goal, and 779 feet from the closest residence at the south goal. And the closest field corner, 'cause there's corner kicks in soccer, is 550 feet, 551 feet from the closest home.
John, you had a memo as well. I believe there was only a handful of items.
Yeah, our, our comments really didn't change because, um, like you said, they're, they're waiting to change their plans until they got full public comment. But just one thing came up. DEC submitted a letter dated, uh, May 18th. There wasn't really anything in there that we hadn't already discussed, but it triggered my memory. I, you guys prepared a, a endangered species report back in November. And one of the conclusions in that report discussed that when DEC weighed in on, on the project, it may trigger the need for an additional look. So I would just, you know, I, I'm not sure that they're, that's warranted, but I would defer to your environmental consultant on that. Just have them take a look at it and make sure that they've covered everything.
We will do so. Thank you.
I don't think there's any actions this board is gonna take tonight, so.
No, the only procedural thing was already accomplished, which was to hold the public hearing over. You know, I, I did wanna, you, you were discussing earlier, and if I may make one suggestion in connection with noise, uh, is that one measure that the board might wanna consider is, is that noise is obviously something very difficult to quantify, especially for a facility like this. Um, you know, if this was a warehouse with, uh, heating and air conditioning units on top, you can actually quantify what the noise is going to be at a certain distance as a result of those units, because we understand the decibel limits of, of that. And so, you know, before concluding that a particular type of mitigation might be required or appropriate here or wanted even, uh, is, is that another option for the board to consider would be a, a post-construction survey, noise survey, uh, that would look at the noise impacts that would occur after the facility is built, after the facility's been used for a period of time, and then evaluate based on actual readings at that time, like what the noise levels would be at the property line, uh, at, you know, to see what the impacts would be, and to have the ability to require additional mitigation measures that might be warranted at that time. And that way, you know, the board wouldn't be stabbing in the dark, you know, as to what appropriate mitigation measures might be in addition to what's already being proposed. It's just something to consider. Uh, it's been done in a number of other towns. It's hel- very helpful. It usually involves coming back either six months or a year after construction's complete or after a season, uh, and, uh, having an actual study prepared by the applicant's consultants, which is then reviewed by the board's consultants, and then the board can make a decision at that time as to whether or not any additional mitigation measures are required. You know, and that, that way it could be based on real-world conditions rather than, you know, anticipated conditions.
I think that's more than enough for today.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I took longer than, than I.
I took much longer.
The, the, the only other question I had was that at the last meeting, the board said that they wanted to come do a site visit and that tonight they would discuss dates for when that would happen. Um, we would love to have the board come out, just like we want to have the homeowners association come out. So I get, from our standpoint is tell us the date and time and we'll make it work.
Do you, do you have any, any suggestions? Do you have any specific dates?
Honestly.
So come up with one right now.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
A, a suggestion. Why don't we, uh, why don't you let me send out an email to the board Monday morning and we'll hold the board?
Yeah.
And then we can give you the date that's, that come up or we'll hold the dates and that's.
Sure, sure. And, and honestly, whatever date works best for the board, we'll make that work for us.
We'll provide you a few dates.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Sorry, John, I left, uh, just a few minutes here.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of stuff left to do here. Uh, so let's get busy here. Could we have a retention? We're gonna start up? All right. Hello? We're gonna start back up, please. So as you know, the Van McMues, uh, review is postponed until July, so we're not gonna say anything else about that. The next item is TL Holdings of New York, three-lot subdivision, board to review application and supporting documentation accepted at the May 12th planning board meeting. Good evening, Mr. Day.
Hi.
Um, I, I would normally ask you to remind us what this proposal is about, but I think we remember.
Yep.
So I think we're gonna go right to, um.
We, we have no issues with the CPL letter.
So I think just for the benefit of the board, we're gonna go ask John Bodendorf to go through his engineering memo real quickly.
Sure. Um, we identified a couple items in their EAF that need to be, um, addressed or updated or revised. Mark, what did, what was the, uh, proposed total limit of disturbance for this?
Uh, it, it may have changed. We just redid deeps out there, uh, yesterday.
Okay.
So I'll revise that.
Okay, 'cause you did indicate that there's gonna be a SWIP for final approval. I don't know if you were talking full or basic.
It might just be basic. I don't think we have over an acre disturbance. But I'll, I'll verify with that, John. We did move a septic, the, the proposed septic on the last lot because of the first lot.
Okay. We'll need, uh, meets and bounds for the driveway, shared driveway use and then, a couple of standard housekeeping items. I don't think there was anything else that really stood out. It's a pretty straightforward application. Yeah, and there, there's another stormwater related comment. You, you did provide a rain garden detail, um, but we didn't notice that anywhere proposed, so.
May not be required. We don't.
Anyways, um, you know, nothing major here.
Okay.
If I could, I just wanna point out, Joe Diamond was retained as the, um, archaeologist. He has finished his, uh, dig and he has submitted a, um, the shovel test information to SHPO. I do have a letter from him. He has submitted it to CRIS and it, we just got this, so I will hear this too.
Technically speaking, Mark, I need that in PDF too. You can give it to me in this, you know, next, next mission, okay?
We'll do.
Thank you.
Yep. And other than that, the board would consider possibly a public hearing?
Okay, um, well, let's see. First, what we'll need to do, is do something with the seeker classification. That was in John's memo. And before we have any further discussion from the board, why don't we just do that? Because what we'll need to do is, um, classify this action as, uh, as unlisted. I think it, we'll ask Dominic, do you agree with that classification?
I, I agree with the classification as far as it goes. My, my only question is whether or not it would be, it would warrant a coordinated review.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that too. In terms of the coordination, I mean, we, we do have a letter that we received from State DOT and they're, um, gonna wanna be involved in terms of any work permits that might, they actually say they may require the driveway to be, um, improved a little bit to meet their current standards. And then there's SHPO, but if, if we hear from them, um, you know, by the next meeting, which may be possible, um, it's not so much a matter of really coordinating with SHPO, but just hearing from them.
Correct.
So, I don't know. I mean, I, I have been kinda thinking that we could do an uncoordinated review and we, we certainly have the right to do that. And if, if there are other involved agencies that, you know, will end up needing to do their own seeker determination, that's okay. I don't care.
That is totally acceptable approach and no, no objections legally.
Okay. Well, what do board members think? I guess the proposal would be to classify this as unlisted and to conduct an uncoordinated environmental review.
Yep.
All right. Would someone like to move that?
Someone.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's passes seven to nothing, seven to zero. Before we get to the question of a public hearing, which I, I'm not sure if we're ready for that yet, but, um, why don't we just go around and see if there are any questions or comments from board members on this? Since we didn't really get to talk about it at the last meeting too much.
It's a common driveway for, for the three lots?
It, it's for the, uh, it cert- will serve three lots. One of the items that was on the last, on the application, uh, there was a note on there about, uh, needing to get a DEC permit for widening of the road. Uh, the surveyor had located that in the winter and he had located a travelway. He has since located it and it is actually wider than it needed to be. So we do not believe we need that permit right now from the DEC to widen that existing driveway. So we'll, we're just, now that we've got the, uh, that survey information, we just wanted to, to report that to the board.
Okay. All right, and then we'll, hopefully we'll hear further from DOT if they've determined that, that it's okay as is.
Mr. Chair, is there gonna be a, is he gonna be able to further subdivide this in the future? Or is this gonna have to be limited to this?
Well, I don't, yeah, I, I don't know if I can answer that. Um, is there any intention for further subdivision?
I, you know, our job's to milk the cow. There's, it's, we're, you can't milk this any further.
There, there is a, um, a wetland in there which does kind of
Limit it.
pre- limit further development in there. Anyone else? Questions about the proposal? So you were mentioning the, um, contact with SHPO, so has, has what's been done so far in, in effect of Phase 1A
Yeah.
study?
Yeah, and he's also, uh, submitted his, he found nothing out there, uh, based on his dig on the shovel test. So he has submitted, you know, why not? Basically, he has submitted this to, uh, CRIS through, for SHPO, so. Um, and that was done on the seventh, so.
Okay.
We assume, we hope to get it back.
Okay. All right, and then at, at the last meeting, I think we did also, um, indicate that this may be subject to the aquifer protection law that was adopted by the town and to follow up with, um, with the building department on that to see what, what their opinion is on that. And then we do still have to hear from the, um, Rockwell Fire District on the driveway access and all that. So, I don't know. I mean, I, I think it would be a little bit iffy to set a public hearing at this point. I think we still have a little ways to go. We're probably not too far off, but I don't think, you know, see if any other board members have any ideas on that, but my initial perception is that we aren't quite ready yet. Okay. And it, does anyone have a different opinion? Okay. So I think that's probably all we need to do tonight, um, unless you have any other questions or anything.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. Okay, while I put these papers away, the next item is the Littleby Farm LLC two-lot subdivision, board to review application and supporting documentation accepted at the May 12th, 2022 planning board meeting. Good evening, Mr. Lonza.
Good evening.
Again, I think I'll, um, skip past the asking you to remind us what the proposal is about, 'cause I think it's pretty straightforward. John does have a engineering memo on this one, so why don't we go directly to that?
Yeah, uh, very, very simple subdivision with no proposed disturbance, so uh, we believe the project should be classified as a type-two action. We've, you know, other than that, they, they've basically supplied everything that they need to, in, in our opinion, in terms of the, the subdivision plat, other than stamps and signatures at this point. Uh, but they did request, uh, some waivers that the board will need to uh, address at the appropriate time, so that's, that's really all we had on this.
Yeah, actually, I was wondering about the seeker classification. Dominic, did you have any thoughts on that? I, personally, I couldn't find anything that was specific on the type-two list that I could say to myself, oh, yeah, it fits directly into that. Although I do understand that, that, John, you're saying that since there is no disturbance, it would make sense for it to be a type-two action, but I'm not sure there is such a, a listing in there. My thought was kind of that we could classify it as unlisted, but in effect do an expedited, you know, review of it, because this is such a simple subdivision. As you say, no disturbance, no development. But we should see what Dominic thinks about it.
Disturbances of 4,000 square feet or less. Disturbances of 4,000 square feet or less are considered to be type 2 actions, but it doesn't say specifically subdivisions in that connection with that.
I, I agree with that. I honestly, I think it would be safer for everyone if it was considered an unlisted action. And we proceeded as the, as the chair suggested.
There's no harm, no foul with proceeding as an unlisted action.
Absolutely.
And also not requiring a coordinated review.
Right, right, yeah.
Because you don't need to coordinate with anyone.
Right.
In connection with that.
Exactly. Well, why don't we, why don't we see if the board is willing to do that? So, this will be a motion to classify the proposed Littleby Farm LLC two lot subdivision as an unlisted action and for the planning board to conduct an uncoordinated environmental review pursuant to SEACR. Would someone like to move that and see where we go?
Someone will.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So, backing up a little bit, any, any questions from board members on the proposal?
No, this one's pretty clear cut, I think, relatively speaking.
I had what I thought, well, we always, we should never say how simple it is and then discover it the next meeting that it isn't actually so simple. But I was interested in this. So, the applicant did submit an agricultural data statement, but apparently there's no one to circulate it to. The county didn't want it because they don't review subdivisions, so they said, no, don't send it to us.
You wouldn't believe the phone calls that we got from that.
And then, then there are no farm operations nearby
Right.
listed to send it to. So, we basically did what we needed to do with that. So, the only other thing I was thinking is that since, as it was put, this is a simple two lot subdivision with no construction or land disturbance, would the board be ready to schedule a public hearing on this?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, is there a motion to schedule a public hearing on the proposed Littleby Farm two lot subdivision located at 284 Baxter Road for the July 14th, 2022 planning board meeting at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter as possible?
Someone will. Second.
Who moved it?
Fred.
Fred moved it and Anthony seconded it?
Sure did.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. And if we did just set a public hearing, where do we put the signs? I think there's only one place.
One place, yeah.
One sign at the driveway frontage of the site at 284 Baxter Road.
Yep.
I don't even think we need to vote on that. That's so straightforward.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anyone have any objections to that?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. So, unless you have any other questions, I think we're all set for tonight.
That's what we were looking for this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks for coming and waiting so long.
After four hours.
Okay, we're moving along here. We may end up slowing down just a bit, unfortunately. And I do apologize again for the lateness of the way this meeting has gone. So, I'm hoping we can get through it fairly quickly. We've only got a couple more, but let's get to it. I was thinking while I was sitting out in the lobby that I might not be able to make it through the rest of this, but I'm revved up now. So, I think I, I think I can, I think we can do it. So, this is the Companion Pet Hospital and Dog Training Facility, amended specialty use permit and site development plan, board to review application and supporting documentation accepted at the May 12th, 2022 planning board meeting. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. I'm also here with Washington Malina who's with Hudson Design. They're the project architect. We're the project civil engineer. Dr. Frederick was unable to be here this evening, so he apologizes for that.
Okay.
But he did give us a few things he wanted us to let you know about.
Okay. Why don't you do that now? Yeah?
Sure. So, I think in the interest of time, I'll, unless you want, I can give you a full spiel again.
No, I think we're okay.
But in essence, we really wanted to just talk about some of the buildings and the uses and everything. And he wanted to just clarify a few things. He said there will not be any horses, cows, goats, llamas, pigs, et cetera housed on the property. This is in reference to the dispatch centers. This is simply a dispatch center where equipment and inventory will be stored and to have office space for our company. He also wanted to let you know that he's not anticipating any changes in the number of delivery trucks once completed. We wouldn't expect any construction vehicles on the property. We will not be having horse trailers or waste disposal vehicles on the site. He said he would not expect any changes in lighting after business hours. No large animals will be on the premises and dogs would not be out at night. So, in terms of the night portion, you know, we'll obviously have to have a full lighting plan that we'll be providing, dark sky compliant. And the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development had also mentioned some standards and lighting that they wanted to see on the site as well, which we anticipate being able to meet no problem. With regard to fencing, there is fencing behind the behavior center. It was just intended just for some of the dogs there for the training portions. There's no other anticipated fencing. We don't have any walking of dogs or anything on Carol Lane or anything like that. And, you know, there's six acres here on the site. So, there is plenty of room on our own site if we do choose to have any dog walking going on there.
Well, would the people who are waiting outside get in? Might be walking their dog?
I suppose, you know, I've brought my dog to the vet and I stay right around the parking area, you know. I wouldn't normally take them off the property. But, I mean, I, I can't say that we could control if a client comes in with a dog and if they don't, if they walk around. But based on where the entrance is for the building and where we have other areas, I would assume that we'd be able to contain that within our site. Another couple of points, it's not a boarding facility, just to be very clear. It is an expansion to the existing vet hospital in addition of a canine behavior health center. And this is a professional facility. It's going to be overseen by veterinary professionals that allow treatment of behavioral issues for their canine patients. And it's not a facility where a dog would go over the weekend while you're on vacation. There's no boarding at all, not a kennel. So, those were some of the points he wanted us to make sure that you're aware of. And we'd be happy to hear any comments you might have on the layout and whatnot. I think we really want to just make sure that layout is generally in acceptance before we go ahead and develop the full engineering plans. So.
And also, just since you were kind of reading from the list
Yeah.
provided, would you be able to put that into writing and submit it to the board?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
I figured we would update that narrative of the proposed buildings that we had.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. And then one other thing I just wanted to let you know, we did get the packet for the adjoining properties. So, we sent the letters out in Debbie's absence while she was on vacation. We were able to secure those parcels within 500 feet from the fish gill assessor, but it was only the fish gill parcel. So, her email said to call Joel if there are any issues with that. And so, we asked Joel, Joel opined that that was going to be sufficient. Debbie returned, said we really need some Phillips Town parcels as well. So, we went ahead and did that as well. So, we actually have two affidavits because we did two separate mailings. We did the separate mailings for Dutchess County and then we did separate mailings for Putnam County. But now Debbie has a copy of that. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie, for straightening that out. Good. All right. Well, John, do you want to go through your memo real briefly?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not going to go through every comment because this is really just a preliminary submission as Mr. Kohler mentioned. But as far as SEACR goes, we believe this project could be classified as an unlisted action, given the amount of disturbance. It's a number of items with the EAF that need to be either completed or updated or revised. We noted the town of Phillips Town will need to be solicited for review and comment. This is probably shaping up as a good candidate for a coordinated review. They're going to need a SWIP. And, you know, there's, there's obviously a lot of housekeeping type items listed in our memo. So, I won't go through all those right now, but, you know, it's a work in progress.
Any questions from board members on either for the applicant or questions for John on the engineering memo?
I guess my only question would be, do we continue with the full EAF if it would be considered an unlisted action? Or how does the town wish to proceed on that? Do you want me to prepare a short environmental assessment form instead?
Oh, no, no. We don't normally go from a long one to a short one. It's usually the other way around if anything. But, yeah, no, I think, I think, you know, John had mentioned a number of revisions probably that need to be made on the full environmental assessment.
It's a working document. As, as you continue to develop the plan, the EAF is going to also change along with that.
Yeah. I'll have a couple of comments in a second. So, first I'll mention, we did receive a letter from New York State Department of Transportation dated June 3rd. They indicate that the project has no direct impact on the state highway, but there could be impacts from stormwater runoff. And they want to be kept in, in the loop in terms of drainage studies and SWIPS that are done. So, that probably is one good reason to do a coordinated review right there. We also received emails from neighbors on Carol Lane, which I thought were pretty interesting and some of them fairly detailed. I won't read them. But some of the comments that they mentioned had to do with the overall impact on quality of life of the residents in the nearby area, the large scale of the proposal to them, you know, at least the need to buffer the proposal from surrounding residences with substantial evergreen plantings. And they did mention the fence, potential odors from the animal facilities, how will animal waste be disposed of, truck impacts from deliveries. They actually talked about the poor condition of Carol Lane and drainage issues that are on there. It sounds like it's a private road. Don't think it's a town road. So, that may take some coordination with the owners along Carol Lane in terms of any, any improvements that may need to be done. Light pollution, they mentioned. So, there are definitely some, already some concerns out there. I had taken a quick look through the county's general municipal law referral response. And you did cover a couple of those things. But one thing they mentioned was, they, and I agree with them, they think that it would be possible and desirable to reduce the amount of impervious surfaces in the proposal. And that might include things like not so wide a driveway in the parking area, the number of parking spaces. The planning board can waive the total number of required parking spaces if it can be demonstrated that, that that would be reasonable and that normally we would require a land banking of the spaces that would be not built.
Yeah, we'd be happy to look into that. I think the travel aisle, we can shrink that down a bit. There was the discussion about the, the travel way that went around the dispatch center.
Yeah.
We could certainly make that a one way. It's, that's how it's intended to be is that the vehicle would be at the portico there, basically. So,
Right.
we could make that a one way and make that all work and help make that a little bit easier with, in terms of impervious. It helps us with stormwater. Obviously, we could land bank. We're already, we're already asking for a little bit of relief on the parking as it was. It was 66 required based on the calculation that we came up with. We are showing 53. We thought that was more than sufficient. I think the county even said that they'd be happy with 40. So, I think your code allows for maybe up to 50%.
That's right, yeah.
So, I, you know, that would be 33 required is the 50%, 50% rule. So,
Yeah.
I think we can do 40. We could, we could certainly land bank a number that makes everybody feel more comfortable. And that'd be part of some of the revisions coming forward.
Okay. And then I think we already mentioned that we will need a lighting plan in full details. We'll need a landscaping plan. And hearing already from the neighbors, they think a substantial amount of buffering would at least help their situation. I'm sure we'll hear more from them when we have the public hearing on that. Any other issues or questions planning board members would like to bring up?
What was the purpose of the circular drive going around?
It's basically where they were going to park the vehicle. So, it's not going to be like in a bay or anything like that, but it was going to be under a portico. And that was the, that was the concept that they wanted to have.
Because that takes up a lot more grass.
It could. We could, we could talk about it and see if he's amenable to, you know, having that vehicle parked elsewhere. I mean, I think, I think it was probably more just because you can kind of hide it behind the building with that. We can look into it.
Jody, anything? Any questions?
None.
Okay. Anthony?
No, the county recommendation on the parking reduction's reasonable. And it was nice to, you know, get the public comment as well on the record early on, especially, you know, substantive comments for our purview. So, I think that was welcome in this case. It was, I think it'll help us out.
Oh, another thing that the GML letter did mention was building elevations, need for like details, building materials, colors, textures, certainly at least for the phase one building, maybe conceptual, you know, for the future of the phase two.
Yeah, we gave, we provided a conceptual. Hudson Design can talk about that a little bit more if you want to right now. But we did provide that. Obviously, we realize that there needs to be a little bit more put into that. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to talk about it too much tonight, but just so that we're aware that we need more details on it. Okay. Well, one thing we definitely will need to do is classify this under SEACR. And I think I agree with John Bodendorf's suggestion that this not only is an unlisted action, but it should be done as a coordinated review. What do you think, Dominic?
I agree.
Yep. Makes sense.
It seems to me that I think the involved agency, involved in this, the agencies we're talking about would probably be New York State Department of Transportation, New York State DEC, Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Now, would we consider the town of Phillips Town Planning Board an involved agency that we would coordinate with? I mean, we should coordinate with them, but they're going to be doing their own review presumably at some point when the land in Phillips Town is affected by disturbance or development. I mean, they should be on our lead agency list, I would think.
I think that's appropriate. You agree?
Yes, so would we.
So, would somebody like to make a motion to classify the proposed Companion Pet Hospital and Dog Training Facility, amended site development plan and specialty use permit as an unlisted action and for the planning board to conduct a coordinated environmental review pursuant to SEACR circulating intent to be lead agency to other involved and interested agencies? And I kind of listed who I think that would be. Would someone move that?
Someone will.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, I think we have that in place. Okay. Okay, any other questions or anything else we need to do tonight? Can you guys think of anything that we missed so far?
In his review memo, Mr. Bodendorf referred to me in connection with the accessory apartment.
Oh, that's, that would be a good thing to discuss. I mean, as, as far as we're looking at it, it's an ancillary use to what the proposed, the main proposed use is, which is to provide somebody onsite as an emergency tech that can take the vehicle out 24/7 type of situations. You know, it's not, this isn't gonna be something where it's like a firehouse, there's not gonna be fire sirens, lights, anything like that. But, they're gonna be available to go out on a call. And they, they look at that as a very unique service that they could provide. And they would be one of the prime type of facilities that could do that. So, that's, that's kinda how we looked at it. You know, I, I think it's something that we all need to discuss, so I can make sure I understand what we might need to do to address any of that going forward.
So, process-wise, is there, I didn't take a look at that part of the code, but would we have to go through some sort of a separate approval besides the site plan and the specialties permit?
I, I don't believe so. I mean, my, my initial read on this was that, that it, you know, it's in the GB district. And in the GB district, uses that are in the R4A district are also allowed. And in the R4A, accessory apartments are accessory uses that are allowed in the R4A. So, I think you actually bootstrap through that process, the fact, you still have to meet the code provision requirements. I think it's 150-40 that relate to accessory apartments. So, you wanna take a look at those to make sure that you're complying with those particular requirements. But, we, we could address this further as, as we go forward. We just took a cursory look at it, and I think making sure that we.
The uniqueness of that would be that normally with accessory apartments, there's a, there's a prime owner of that. And then, there's a, a secondary rental, and that's what the accessory apartment normally is. So, this would really be, there's no prime owner that's gonna be necessarily living on the site. So, I guess that's where the, that's where we are looking at it as an ancillary use to the prime and not necessarily a concurrent, separate defined use as a, as an accessory apartment. But, you know, we'd love to work with you on that and figure out if there's a way to, to make that happen. It's a, it's a unique service, like I had mentioned, and it's, it's integral to what they're looking to do here.
Yeah, and we'll have to make sure that that doesn't violate, so to speak, any of the provisions that do deal with accessory apartments.
Correct.
And if it does, then figure out how to address that. So, I mean, I, I don't think I have any particular problems or issues with that type of a, you know, a living unit, so to speak, in the facility, if it's, if it's serving a specific purpose relating to the facility.
We also kinda looked at it as a potential for, almost like a security of the site as well, too. Which, in terms of the neighbors that might be residential, they actually may be able to say, you know, okay, that at least there's somebody watching that site, maybe help keep things on the up and up, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any, any thoughts about that from any other board members? About the, the living unit that we're talking about? No particular problem with it?
It's different.
Yeah, it's a little different, but it's, seems like it might be able to work out. Okay. Well, if there are no other questions from the board, or if you have any other questions for us, this would be the time.
I don't think so, I think it's just a matter of coming back with some updated materials and doing some of our testing and refining the plans, advancing them, so.
Actually, the, the sooner you can get the, you know, at least the revision on the environmental assessment form to us, we'll need that before we can circulate it to involved agencies. So, the sooner you do that, the sooner the seeker process can start.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to do an interim submittal, you know.
And would, would the board also make the referral to the town of Phillips Town at that time?
Yeah, I think so.
Makes sense.
You mean of the application or the?
The, yeah, the application.
Application already went to the town, then they accepted it. That was a revised motion, because I've got to include it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Haven't received anything.
Okay, John, any other, anything else? Okay. All right, we look forward to seeing how this progresses.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay.
Good luck getting through the rest of your meeting.
Well, we're almost there, actually.
We're just about there.
Almost there. So, yes, our final review is Walmart fiscal MFC expansion, amended site development plan, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on May 25th, 2022. Welcome.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Matt DeSimone, here from Mark Talbert, I understand has been here the last, last couple of times.
Right.
Unfortunately, could not make it.
So, I think we do have a letter from Mr. Talbert with some of the updates that were in the plans, if you wanna run through those real quickly.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's the May 23rd letter, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, let's see, I don't know if we wanna go through his first comment, nothing to go there regarding the seeker response.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sorry, yeah, first comment regarding the seeker response, just acknowledged. Next comment there.
Yeah, you don't need to go through every one of them in detail, just sort of highlight, like what's resulted in actual plan changes since we last saw it.
Sure, yeah, I guess the, the biggest comment, the, the meanest one here is regarding the parking count. So, I guess the last time there, there was a comment about whether the reduced parking would be acceptable. And what we've been told from, from Walmart is that they did an internal study using their own analysis to kinda determine what the parking reduction would turn out to be onsite, just based on the construction of this market fulfillment center. And they determined that it would be about 90% of what is currently required now. So, that's kinda the thought process and their, their backup on why the reduced parking would work for them. And that's not also factoring in the public transit that's been required by the board and the bike parking and the carpooling and that, and that sort of thing, so. Don't know if there's any questions on, on comment three under plans.
Yeah, I was actually glad to see that there is a proposed relocation and rebuilding of the bus stop and coordination with Dutchess County Transit.
Right, right.
So, I think that's a definite enhancement in the plan.
Exactly, that's been, that's been added to the plan as well. So, let's see.
I think there, let's see, we hadn't seen a landscape plan before, but now there is a, a very basic one, but it looked okay to me. It's nothing fancy, but it's.
All right, and then I guess as far as the rest of this letter, I guess we have a question regarding the SWIP. I guess if there are no more comments from the, the town's perspective, I was wondering if we can begin the, the process with DEC, which would require the MS4 sign-off form to be, to be signed?
Well, let's turn to John Bodendorf, our engineer. And that, that's something that, I mean, the, the town, I think, will require.
Yeah, I mean, typically, that's done at, at the point where you're ready for site plan approval, not well ahead of the game. Because you're not gonna be authorized to do any of this work until the, the board signs off anyway, so.
Got it, okay.
But, in terms of your SWIP, we, we have no issues with it at this point. So, when it's appropriate, we can advise the town when to, to sign the appropriate forms. Regarding our, our comment memo, we, we looked at their parking rationale, it, it seems to make sense. But, the, the board does have to officially accept the, the reduction in parking that they're, they're looking for. We've asked for a couple of details for, they have a truck well trench drain that, we just wanted to see a detail of that. And then, they, since the last time, they've added a pump house and a storage tank, which we didn't really get any information as to what that's actually for. So, we've asked for some additional details on that.
So, I'm sorry, so that's actually, it's kind of an in-kind replacement of the one located towards the top of the page up here. The plumbing design, like the internal plumbing design isn't complete yet, I understand. So, you know, we, we don't have a, a real in-depth details of that at this point. But, the intent is that it's, it's replacing the one over here, I guess that's closer to the, you know, closer to the water body up there, so.
So, does that feed like a sprinkler system or?
I, I don't know exactly what it's for, yeah.
Yeah, I guess just if, with appropriate notation and, and your response letter, it'll probably become more clear what exactly that.
Okay, yeah, just at this point, there aren't formal calculations or anything, I guess, close to being, you know, complete, I guess.
Okay. I guess there was, in the package, reference to some architectural plans with regards to the, the bike parking that weren't included, so we've asked for those. Clarification on a symbol that you used on, on one of your legends.
It was a typo, that's, yeah, it's the inlet protection there.
Okay, and a lighting plan, I, I think that was, that may have been asked for previously. But, any, I don't know if you're proposing any lights, I would imagine there's gotta be some. So, that's, that's gotta be part of the.
Yeah, we do have lights there, so do you want like the, the curves? Do you want the, the actual foot candle values or?
Everything, yeah. Yeah, we've, we've detailed all the typical information we asked for in, in our comment.
Okay, yeah, no, yeah, we are showing lights, we just obviously didn't, didn't include that, yeah.
That's essentially it.
Okay, thank you. What do board members think about the, particularly the parking analysis? That was kind of one of the key things that we were waiting for. It is pretty basic. I think it's probably adequate for our purposes. As with some of the other applications, well, at least one other that we're dealing with, this is in a planned shopping center district. So, the planning board can make a determination of whether adequate parking would be available based in the proposal. I don't think we need to actually do a waiver in the planned shopping center district as we do in other areas, in other zones. In the sense that we don't need to require like a future reserve area landscaped. But, basically, just, we just need to make a determination of whether the proposed parking is adequate. And I think we could probably factor in the fact that Walmart and Sam's Club are huge entities together in the planned shopping center district, and there probably are way more parking spaces there than are ever gonna fill up, so.
Never had a problem finding a spot there.
So, if, actually, if there is no current agreement between the two entities, I don't know that we would need to or want to require such an agreement, but it might make sense to have, you know, like a shared parking agreement between Walmart and Sam's Club if there isn't one already. I would think, you know, I wouldn't think that either would have a problem with whoever parks in there lot are probably gonna go into their building anyway, so. But, anyway, that's, that's.
No, I moved my car. I moved my car.
Yes, there are some people like you who would park over here, bring your little box out and move the car over to here. Park over here, or, or your big box, because these are big box stores.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, you need to do that, yeah.
Anyway, we're, it's getting late, so we are getting a little bit off track there, including myself.
It's time to get kitty.
But, actually, one thing I was thinking, get the board's input on this, and also our consultants, would it be appropriate at this point to schedule a public hearing on this proposal? I know that you did mention there are those few items, mostly technical things, that we're, we still would need, but.
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason why not to schedule it at this point. The, I mean, if, if the public have any comments about lighting, which I'm not sure why they would, given the, the location, and their lighting plan isn't submitted at that point, you could always keep the public hearing open. But, I would imagine they could easily produce a lighting plan ahead of the next meeting, too, so.
Yeah, and that would be desirable if that could happen.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it would be adding information, we have lights there, it's just adding what's hidden there, so.
So, what does the board think about setting a public hearing for the July meeting?
We only have two.
Yes. We have two, so.
So, we three.
Might as well make a third.
Next meeting will just be public hearings.
John, John?
I just have one quick thing, and I, I guess you guys could answer this, because I was part of this when I was working in White Plains, and we had a thing, what I noticed on, you know, we're talking about parking and everything else. Walmart constantly uses a lot of the spaces as a seasonal thing, and they have storage trailers. Now, the storage trailers are considered space. And in White Plains, when we had that problem, when we had it too long there, they started considering it as, you know, storage space. And actually, we needed to have more parking spaces, we had to eliminate the storage trailers and also things. I'm just kinda curious what, you know, the town is, what the town thinks about that or whatever. Because I just, it's, it's a constant thing going on there.
Yeah, well, Debbie was just whispering, there, there apparently is some kind of agreement on file with the, the town to have those there.
There's a resolution for the number of trailers that are allowed per year and the, and the times they're allowed.
Okay.
I don't know what the number is.
Okay.
There was a resolution back when.
Because we had twenty at one time, and we had to get rid of, down to five.
I don't think it's that many, but they had up to seventeen at one time.
Yeah, we had to go down to five.
That's for this, this store?
For this store, absolutely.
I recently had to do one for another, same thing, yeah.
And those are typically taking up parking spaces, yeah.
Yeah, well, they, well, they also do like, you know, pallets and fenced-in areas. I mean, Home Depot does the same thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not.
Actually, the resident, I'm gonna be honest with you, I mean, I can pull it, the res, the resolution that was last amended years ago prevented them from doing that in the parking area. So, it's a matter of enforcement, if that's how.
Okay, that, that does what we're just asking, I just, because, because we're talking about parking spaces and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good question. Well, so, we were kind of on the way to considering a motion to schedule a public hearing, so are we? Any agreement that we do?
We can go all the way with that.
All right, so, I think Felix says he would like to move it. So, it would be something to the effect of scheduling a public hearing on the proposed Walmart fiscal MFC expansion, amended site development plan for the July 14, 2022 meeting at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. So, Felix, would you like to move that?
I did, I'm gonna do it again, and Anthony seconded.
Well, then, you would have to second it and third it.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Would someone else like to second it?
Anthony seconded.
Anthony did already. All right, any further discussion? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. And, we need to figure out where to put signs advertising the public hearing. So, one obvious location came to mind, which is at the main entrance to Walmart on West Merritt Boulevard.
Yeah.
I was thinking that it might not hurt to put a second one actually in the site, like at the southeast corner of the. like, at the southeast corner of the building where the addition is planned, so that people could see that that's where the addition is going to go.
Agreed.
And should we put, should we put one from the Sam's Club side? From that side. You, you don't have to take a turn here. I mean, you can go all the way to Sam's Club and then come.
Yeah, I don't know. What are you, what do people think about that? I mean, that would in a sense be putting, it's, I don't know how these parcels are. Are they leased or owned by the, the entity? So, that, for instance, the Sam's Club parcel would probably have a separate lease agreement with the owner from Walmart. And so, again, it gets to this question of can we require the applicant to put a sign on somebody else's leasehold parcel or own parcel? So.
They're separate corporate entities.
But do we know where the boundary is between Walmart and Sam's Club?
Well, yeah, I think you could probably see it on the site plan. I can't tell you where it is, but it's, the site plan could tell you where it is. But I think, you know, I mean, if you're driving along West Merritt Boulevard, you're going to see if we put the sign out at their entrance.
Can, can we put one on the building?
Well.
If you put it on the building, that covers that, that whole front. And right now, it's a big cement piece, you know? It's no windows being blocked or anything else.
Well, I mean, if Walmart agreed to put it on their building facade, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a way they could do it.
I'm just asking if that's temporary signs now, we're going down another whole.
Well, that's, that's true. That's, that's another question. I don't, I don't know. I think if we put one at the entrance and one like at the corner, the southeast corner of the building, I had actually thought, well, maybe we should put one at the traffic light, like Route 9 Merritt Boulevard. But again, that's like a state, state or town road right of way. And we're not supposed to do that. So, I think those two are okay then.
I'm going to vote from the mobile gas station to Walmart parking lot, that road. Should we put there one, one there? The gas station. There is a road going from the gas station.
Oh, there's like a connection between the gas station and Walmart?
Walmart parking lot.
Not at the light of the entrance to Walmart? I mean, right where they turn into the parking lot?
But that's not Walmart's property.
It would be Walmart's when you get into.
That intersection, you have to go into there to get.
Yeah, and by the time you get in there, you're already, you know.
A little bit outside of there is not their property, so. So, when you come in, there's two sides, either side.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that we need more than the two, but I, you know.
Yeah, I think that should be enough, I guess, for such, such a big property.
So, we have a consensus that we'll have those two that I mentioned? One at, at the main entrance and one at the southeast corner of the building?
I think that's fine.
I think so. If it's not enough, we'll hear about it.
Probably not from residents, though.
I'll stop there.
Okay. We don't need a vote on that. We'll just do it. Okay. Do you have any other questions for us?
One request. We just want to know if we have permission to coordinate with the, the board's professionals outside of the meeting? Just a lot of these questions we could have kind of gone over and maybe a couple of emails here and there. We're just wondering if that would be acceptable.
We could make it acceptable by, when we do that, we usually have a motion to allow our consultants to have direct communication with the applicant. Would that be okay with our consultants?
Absolutely.
Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect? To authorize such?
I'll move that.
Okay, Felix moves it? Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any oppose? Any abstentions? So, that is good to go.
All right.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. I think we, I think we made it. And it's so much earlier than last month's meeting. So, the, the next meeting is scheduled for July 14th. And the deadline for submissions is Wednesday, June 29th.
Okay.
So, I had, unfortunately, like several items I wanted to discuss under other business, but that ain't happening tonight.
I hope it happens next time.
One of, one of which has to do with the length of meetings. So, think about that. How can, how can we prevent meetings going till almost midnight? Or better still, how can we prevent meetings from going past 11?
12 noon start.
So, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? And we don't need a second because we're just going to do it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Anthony, for taking over for me a couple of times.